2018 Select Board Meeting to order at 6:30. First thing on the agenda is to open the bids for the replacement of a 30-inch metal culvert with a cement box culvert. Discussion and voting. So we have, it's like seven. I'll take the top two. Pass the rest in. Everyone will take one. I'll order the first and the last one.
I'll ask myself.
We've got to see what I have. I've got two?
Two.
Two.
All right, we're going to start off with the first one. The first proposal from Danielson Construction is a 2-8 turnaround project time. $99,950. All right, Gwen, you want to read yours?
I have one from Basin Brothers Trucking. And the amount is $118,600.
Was that Basin? Basin.
118,600.
118,600.
All right, so I have two here. So I have Renault Brothers. And it is 112,000 even. And I have A.S. Clark &amp; Sons, 104,183. Yes.
M&amp;M Excavating for $134,215. 134215.
M-A-B, sorry?
B, I'm sorry, like vegetables, something you know nothing about. That was a shortcut, Gwen.
It's true.
M-A-B, B-E-A-N, for 163,000 even.
163,000.
I'm reading them well.
And I have one here. Amadon Construction.
You got it right. That's good. There it is.
Amadon Construction from Jamaica, Vermont has a bid of $125,000 for the project.
No, it's Danielson.
All right, so the bid amounts are $99,950, 118,600, 112,000, 104,183, 134,215, 163,000, and 125,000. I believe that there was a requirement that the, there was a mandatory meeting. Did all, Mark? Did all the people who are here tonight come to the mandatory meeting?
I think I've only got seven written down here.
I have seven bids, correct?
Yeah.
So we're contracts, yeah.
I had two.
I didn't see Cold River.
I'm sorry?
Did you get a bid from Cold River?
Cold River? No.
I didn't see it.
We have bids from Danielson Construction.
Yeah.
Amadon Construction.
Yeah.
Basin Brothers.
Basin Brothers. Chris?
Oh, sorry. Renault?
Renault.
Clark?
Clark. And Bruce, yours where?
Was, excuse me, M-A-B. And M&amp;M.
Yeah, the only one on the, on the site unless it came to the bid showing that didn't, we didn't receive was Cold River.
So everyone who resented bid in though did, was at the mandatory meeting? That's what I was asking, okay. And there were some questions and you all received the answers to those questions that came up at that meeting, because I have copies of those behind me. All right, so anything that you want to say, Mark, before we?
No, I think we're good.
All right, what's the Select Board's pleasure? Assuming that the, all the bids are two specifics that were on the RFP.
Well, the two that are lower, Danielson Archery, right, Clark, sorry.
The two lowest bids were $99,950 and...
Who was the 99,000?
Daniels.
Daniels?
And the other lowest one was 104,183.
It was Clark.
Clark Excavating. All right, so I have the little bid in my hand. What's the pleasure?
Are all things equal? I'd like the road foreman to review the contenders of the bid, just to make sure.
They came with the...
There's no...
Making sure all things equal, okay, Mark?
Yeah.
Mark, here's the question for the proposal that we sent out, and that's the bid. I have a short bid.
That was a question. I'd like to review whether Danielson's done projects for us before.
Yeah.
Do you want to pay me anything?
Do you know if you guys have done work here for?
I don't know. I've been with a company for years.
Yes. They did a bridge on the Christchurch Bridge.
Yes.
And they also did the box culvert up here above the town branch.
Yep.
Okay. I'm glad you guys know more than me.
Just live in the town.
Actually, I may have to, the Danielsons did the box culvert above the town branch.
Right.
When else did the bridge?
No. No? Danielson did the bridge, too.
They did the bridge, too, okay.
We did the green bridge.
Right.
All right, that's the one I was, yeah.
Anyway.
This is coming from a grant.
Part of the money comes from a grant, that's correct.
Yep.
And the Danielson bid also can, can I have the rest of the bids back this way? With the envelopes and such, so they don't get mixed up? That's insurance with it.
And did you have a second one?
Well, the other second one would be...
A.S.
Clark. Would be A.S. Clark.
Did you want to check both or?
Sure. Yes. The two lower bids in front of us, one for $99,950, and one for $104,183. Both of those low bids need all of the RFP qualifications.
Well, I'm going to make a recommendation like I have in the past, that our job, my understanding, the Select Board's perusal is to try and save the town as much as possible. We've done this before on other bids, and we've had experience with both Danielson and A.S. Clark. They're both pretty much, you know, we've been happy with both of them, and I recommend that we go with the lower bid of $99,950 by Danielson.
One second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a motion, and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of going with the bid with Danielson Construction for the box culvert for the price of $99,950, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, Danielson, you have the job. All right, very good. We'll hold on to this and be in touch with you. Set it up. Okay. Gentlemen, thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, I saw it. I actually put it all together. I'm going to actually put this in the other one. Your is the box culvert, which one is this?
This is then by Cervelo Exchange with...
Yes. And like that low spot, I think.
Yeah, we've been... Charlie, are you wondering if we're going to talk about town?
Oh, yeah, that's over there now.
If you did. I don't think so. I don't think there are...
That's going to happen in the summer.
We're just going to, we're going to vote to adopt it. I mean, I don't think there's anything outstanding for any particular town plan.
Charlie might say.
Charlie just would say if we're going to have meaningful discussion, but I...
We're going to probably go through it real quick. We'll be there in a minute.
Okay.
All right, over to the review changes to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I have one.
What's that, sir?
I have another change, seven, excuse me, A through J. I'd like to have a discussion just before that to see if, where do we stand with the budget, whether we're on track with last year as far as level funding.
Budgets.
Have we, I looked at some of the yellow lines, stuff that...
Okay, can I just say that this is when we're proposing changes to the agenda, not discussing about, so we're not, it's not a budget discussion?
I'm making a recommendation, we discuss that before we discuss A through J. Vote on. That's, that's what I'm trying to do.
You want to discuss what?
Nine.
I want to discuss...
Nine first. You want nine and eight to switch?
I couldn't do that because it said vote on it as well, didn't it? If I look at the, right, I could, or the capital A, is there a funny?
So...
A and B.
We'll just discuss where the budget's at before we vote on it.
You got it.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking.
All right, so just, couldn't compare that?
That's all. So where we're at with the numbers, and then we can approve all the other stuff that we wanted to add, and, you know, that we're, you know.
We got it.
I know.
All right, next is, oh, gotcha. Next is moving of the minutes from January 3rd. Page one of six.
Page one, B, Bruce Miller-Cutts family, there should be no apostrophe.
And BB Ruth, D Ruth?
DS, yes.
Okay.
How's that?
Page two.
The only thing I was going to suggest is that we move the third paragraph where it says Mr. Bills has gone over plans, that we move that above planning for new salt shed, sand shed, general contractor discussion, because it wasn't...
Dead of sequence, you mean?
It's out of sequence, yeah.
Okay.
Although in the end, I don't think we actually did discuss the, have the general contractor discussion, because...
No, we did not do the general...
Archie wasn't here.
Right, we did not do the general contractor.
So I'm just going to kill that header and list the rest of it under, because I'm now editing.
Oh, okay, yes.
That's why you do whatever I want. You can.
Okay, page three of six.
Okay, next to my wonderful name there is the second sentence, we posted on the S-R-V.
Are we on page three?
That's the Lister, that's the abbreviation for the Lister.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, Lister.
Anything else?
What is this? Page four?
Four, line down. Mr. Tans, explain that this AOT documentation, that it be all highlighted, so...
Mr. Tans, it should be capitalized.
Tans, it should be capitalized, too.
Okay. Anything else on page?
Under accounts payable, Ms. Medjoe, we'll sure approve accounts payable warrant dated 1/23/18. I'm sure Campy wrote it.
Was it three?
Maybe it was...
January, January...
Was it the third, or could it possibly have been 12/23/17? I don't know.
Wait a minute.
We'd have to look in, we'd have to look back.
Like dated, what day was dated, you mean?
Well, it was dated in the future, so I, so that's why I'm not sure what the right date was. We'd have to, we'll have to go back and...
Was that accounts payable or was it payroll?
Accounts payable.
Was it maybe that?
Yeah, that was for 1/3, so probably it was 1/3.
Oh, accounts of 1/3, yeah, accounts payable, 1/3. The payroll might be a week earlier if you came in, I came in, I didn't see the sign in.
I did.
But this is the pass...
Is that one of the ones I signed?
No, this is accounts payable, so it's not something you signed.
Okay, so we'll change it to 1/3/18. Okay.
Good catch on that.
Anything else?
Page five?
Okay.
Page six?
Dan, with my name again. Mr. Melo discussed of the S-L-D-C compensation, and proposes to go in effect immediately.
Discuss, just word, drop the of.
That's it.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Remove that we have approved the minutes of January 30th amendment, second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, and the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye. You seconded it?
I say, I talk fast and then I forget what I'm saying.
So we...
Okay.
Dan, relax.
All right, scheduled members of the public, Barbara for the Planning Commission, final discussion, and the, are there any other questions that anybody has about... I have Barbara, oh, I spelled her name.
Oh.
Barbara.
You had another one in your...
I thought, all right.
Let's go. I still have right in the minutes.
All right, so we've had, we've had the hearing. I haven't, have we had any other people comment or comments, or the, no, haven't had any other comments on the community or residents for the town plan? So anything you'd like to say before I make a motion?
No.
Make a motion.
I have a motion somewhere here, hold on. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, hold on, we accept the town plan as submitted at the hearing that was held on December 13th.
Is it, if, yes, it was the, the third?
December 13th?
January?
December.
I'm sorry, December.
December.
No, it wasn't. The ninth was a Saturday, if that helped you.
Before we go on with the, I'm just, there were changes made at the...
There were changes that were made after hearing.
So it wasn't what was submitted. December 13th was a Wednesday.
Right.
That was the date of the hearings. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the town plan as, as modified at the hearing on Janu, on December 13th, accepted into, let me see...
No, it's got to be adopted.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the town plan that was discussed at the hearing on December 13th, and amended...
On the same date.
On the same date.
Second, if you're done.
Sorry, can you just, you're going to have to restate it again.
I made a motion to adopt the town plan.
As revised.
As revised at the hearing, let's do better, let's do better.
We can change it.
As revised at the hearing on December 13th.
Second.
That's the 17th.
Okay.
This is motion.
I'll second that one.
Seconded by Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the town plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Town plan has been adopted as revised. Thank you very much for your work on the community.
Yeah, thanks, Scott.
Appreciate it. You know how much time we spent on it and all the revisions and such, so I know we had a little gap, and we all held our breath, but it worked out very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is, yeah, the, Chris Campy has sent us a model letter. I guess we just fill this in and all.
Right, yeah. It'll have to be presented to the Wyndham Regional Commission, and they will do what they have to do, but basically, the town now has a town plan in effect, as of right now.
Excellent.
So, Charlie, take care.
Thank you.
Very good.
Great.
So do we, please, now it goes to Wyndham Regional, or do we...
Yes. No, it's been adopted now. It is, it's in effect as of right now, and if there was any Act 250 meetings or anything, that town of, a plan would be the effective town plan that we use. It'll be sent now to the Wyndham Regional Commission, they will look at it and pass it to other towns, and they will act on it, but it is adopted as the town plan right now.
Right, so we'll still get a little, a review from...
Yeah, then what happens is they send it to other towns, they have a, a committee of three people from other towns, surrounding towns, who will look at it, ask some questions, see if it fits in with the regional plan, and if there's any things that they need to modify, they will suggest it to the town, and then it'll be approved.
Shorty.
Nice job, nice job, Suzanne.
Thank you. Thanks for work, and thanks for...
Next item on the list is Nancy Libby is not feeling well as the animal control officer. She and I both received a phone call about a dog attack that occurred on, on January 5th. The woman who was bitten did file an official complaint with the animal control officer. The dog that, it was a renter, was going to her landlord's house to pay the rent, Merrill Drive, and the pit bull came around and attacked the woman in the arm and leg. She was hospitalized, I raised COVID, she had to go twice. There, I mean, I did some exchanges, some emails, and as far as doing some research back on this particular dog, we have taken the owner to court before for various violations in the dog ordinance, but this is the first official report of the dog biting. I am personally aware that the dog did bite someone else a year and a half ago, it was a police officer, but the police officer decided not to record that complaint because he didn't want to go through the paperwork. This may have, this dog is from the lonely who was bitten last week, also says that she is aware that other people have had problems with the dog. Vermont has a one-bite law, which is a give to that dog. The dog also bit the person on the dog's property, the owner of the home. Dog, the dog was on the owner's property, so that cuts out quite a bit of things that can be done as far as setting for a hearing. We do have a series of steps that can be done with hearings, but my recommendation is going to be, does not qualify for a hearing because the dog bite occurred, even though it required medical attention, the dog bite occurred on the personal property. I checked back on email records with the BLTC lawyers in a similar situation. Still, the only thing that we can do, and what I might recommend, and I don't know how well it will stand up in court, is that I will ask the animal control officer to issue a municipal summons for a vicious dog, and see if we can get the police officer witness and whoever else to go to court and make a case, but there's very little we can do. I'm going to recommend that we issue a summons, and recommend that the person who was bitten proceed in her own legal circle to sue on her own. She's going to have to get a person, a new lawyer, and take her to court. Yes, sir?
You said one-bite law.
One-bite law.
What does that mean?
Means every dog gets one free bite.
Good to know. You bit twice.
Not recorded, not complained.
No, I mean, on the same person, I thought you said.
No, it's one incident.
It's probably one incident.
Yeah, one incident.
So...
In fact, in the last, in the past 10 days, if you saw in the newspaper, the reformer had an article about a similar situation, and again, there's not, that's a very, very weak law.
Is that the same, the dog that bit another dog like a couple years ago?
Did a cop, they had a stick for it.
And the dog ended up having to go to bed.
I don't know about the dog-to-dog fight. I don't know that one, I'm sorry, I told you someone in person, but...
Right. I think there's a, I think it's the same pit bull, same area.
Same area, yeah, it's a Beverly Waters dog, it's not a secret.
Right.
It's Beverly Waters dog, it's her pit bull, Gucci, who attacked the woman as she rang the doorbell to pay her rent, came around from outside the house. So it is recorded, she was angry and upset, and emotionally upset about it, but my recommendation again is to issue a summons, and suggest that we support her, she decided to take it to court. Yes, sir?
Have you looked in the big, the, big dog, yeah, the wolf?
Yeah.
Because for some reason, I seem to recall there was some, there was some action that maybe can be taken, and again, I can't recall the, the whole thing, but you have the big...
I have, yeah. And I went back and proved that what the lawyers had said in the past, and, and...
This is the same animal that's been aggressive right along?
Aggressive, correct. Nuisance, correct. The one we took to court and should have paid fines, and that I found out has not been paid because we have not gotten anything. The court system should be picking up on that, so...
Vicious.
That's the same one that Nancy spent the whole day with in the back of her truck.
Yes.
Same one?
Yes.
Yep.
And Nancy drove around...
Same person, same dog.
Same person, same dog.
She couldn't even get, I saw.
So, is there anything else that I think, recommendation? Again, do summons, is not...
So we can't do, we can't do a warning?
Yeah, we're going to give the dog, or person, a warning, that basically, we're going to have a ticket.
Good, do that.
On that issue, ticket with a...
It goes on the record.
Yeah, right.
It's going to go on the record.
That's what we can do.
That's all we can do at this time. So, you know, if, if it was off-leash and it was on the street, then we could have a hearing, and we could do a little bit more, but it was on their own property, so that's a problem. But it will now be on record that the dog is labeled as vicious. Okay? All right, that's all we can do, unfortunately. So there's a form that we have, and I'll send it out. All right, any unscheduled members of the public? No, hearing none, we want to, Guy Tans, the town clerk report?
I'm all set, I think everything's running smoothly, we're selling dog licenses, and Gwen continues to digitize the land records books, and we're moving right along.
Okay, very good. Highways and roads, current progress... So, there's a form that we have, I'll send it out. All right, any unscheduled members of the public? No, hearing none. We want to, Guy Tan's a town clerk report.
I'm all set, I think everything's running smoothly, we're selling dog licenses and going, continues to digitize the land records books and we're moving right along.
Okay, very good. Highways and roads, current projects and plans, Mark?
Well, right now, well, we do have the tree removal going on in town, removing all the dead, uh, town diseased trees. I nicknamed it, uh, project Feed the Chipper. And we have approximately two more days left to get the rest of the trees that we ribbon.
Are we saving any of the chipping stuff or the playground next year?
They have brought a load to the town yard, and I told them if they accumulate more, they're welcome to drop it there. You guys save some for zone use. Now, today, uh, some dead elm were cut across the street here, and I was assisting with traffic control, and while I was standing, um, in the road in between traffic, I, I was looking up over the round schoolhouse, and there's a large ash tree that stands to the right, and I noticed some dead branches had come off the tree. It's, it looks pretty healthy, but if you, after looking at it several times, I noticed some big fungus mushrooms coming off of the back leader, about halfway up the tree. There's a dead limb and the, the moisture's obviously going down into the tree. So, I asked Henricar, the owner of the company, if he would, at his leisure, come and walk around the tree and give us his best opinion on if the tree is a safe tree to have hovering over our town's historical round schoolhouse. So, he said he would be glad to give us, uh, you know, his thoughts on the tree. And at the same time, I was thinking, if there is, if he deems it kind of a dangerous tree to be hovering over, uh, you know, a landmark, um, I recall we, we talked about some money that had came to the Round School House Historical Society.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how much to be used, but if it could be used to help save, or-
Wasn't that $500? To be, yeah, it's to be used-
For the Round School-
For, to, for the Round School House at the discretion of the Historical Society or ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not out there hunting for, for trees to take down, I'm just-
But it's-
Looking at the structure itself, and then I was looking at, well, when you, during the, you know, the, the weather we get nowadays.
Yeah.
And there's also a, a large cherry tree up in back of it. I know it was on somebody else's property, but a lot of dead in that cherry tree, and I'm not sure if that would reach the roof of the schoolhouse as well, so. It's just something I wanted to put on the radar for the future and-
Think he'll, well, he'll hack, he'll be able to take a look at it and let us know at the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, he wanted to come and take his time to, to walk and, and look it over better when it wasn't snowing.
So snowy.
Well, thanks for noticing that, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you can go by something all day long, and, and that ticked the moment I was standing there with opportunity to, you know, start thinking and, and notice there might be potential there for some damage. So, anyway, that, last week, we, we had a rainstorm that showed up, and we monitored the roads, and I, I used the grader to push back some of the snow banks to allow, uh, the flowing water to get out of our, our roads, mainly the hills. We had a couple incidences where melting snow and, and rain accumulation together was crammed with snow and ice, and it was coming in the roads, so we spent a day correcting water back into the roads. And I think we made up pretty decent compared to some other towns I heard had some major issues with major flooding, and they're still, still today are, are recovering from it. I also talked with Archie for just a few minutes. I don't know if I'm getting off from the road-
No, this is your time, go ahead.
Um, when we talked about hiring on a, a person to oversee the, the shed grant, or, or not the grant, but the overseeing-
General contract.
Job, Ron Bell was the guy who designed the blueprint that we are using for the new structure, and Archie thought that his blueprints only cost the town around $600, which is very good if that's correct numbers, that's a, you know, he took a, a state-approved, a large blueprint of the same thing, downsized it to make it fit our needs. So, he is going to be, Archie asked him if he would be at our, our bid showing, uh, when we get ready to put this job out to bid, and, and he said he would be glad to be there to answer any construction questions that may arise, since he knows fully everything about the structure.
So your angle, which I think I see, tried to prevent having a GC?
Well, Archie thought that if we maybe asked this guy that he, he's, I think he, he's only doing this part time, that he has extra time, that he would be interested in maybe overseeing.
Right.
It's a question that Archie wants to, you know, ask him if he would be available and if he would consider it.
I agree.
Well, if, but it has to meet our hiring policy as far as money expenditure.
Right, right.
Because if it's, you know, if they get seven, 10, 12% of the cost, it tells them about 30,000.
Right.
About a lot of-
Yeah, this will have to be compared with, but it's, uh, you know, he may do it for less, but it, it's just something Archie came up with, which I thought was a great decision.
I feel-
It sounds like, the, the guy lives just across the river in New Hampshire, and if it worked out, he could probably drive here each day and check on, um, what's going on, but that's to be considered.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause I don't think any of us figured that we would need a GC to get, just up to price of the whole thing.
Yeah, well, it's been on the agenda for the past-
Yeah, we, we had it on the table for later discussion, that this, this can get added into it and then-
The time, correct.
That's another part of the discussion now.
We can talk about it, okay.
Uh, as far as any other projects go right now, we're just maintaining winter general maintenance. That and the tree removal. I think that's it. The, the, just one final thing, also, I believe Samora had, had a question on, um, how much was the, the grants for, for this fox culvert that just went out to bid, how much the town is going to get reimbursed? And it was a $125,000 grant.
Really?
But in order to get this money back, we have to spend, you know, like 135 to receive that money back. But that's the maximum amount, was 125.
And since our bid came in under $100,000.
We're gonna be 100%?
So we should be-
Be able to-
We're in shape, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, less than, what, the part that we have to put up.
How much?
20%.
20%.
Yeah, it's, right, we have to match the 20% regardless, but still, it's good.
Yeah, unless something unforeseen rises during the construction part of it.
Right.
We should be-
Should be.
Good to go.
Get there.
Anything else?
No.
All right, but I'm gonna have a couple of questions for you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
The next item is a road bridge weight limit policy for review. Guy gave me this a while ago, and it's a form that says need to review a policy for, I'm gonna have to make our corrections and then vote on it at the next meeting. We have six different bridges in town. Bridge number, I'm gonna just read it over quickly to you. Bridge number 19 is the Green Island Bridge on the West River. That's rated at 60,000 pounds. Bridge number 12, over Grassy Brook Road near Putney Mountain, that's rated 50,000 pounds. It should be raised to 60,000, go up 10,000 pounds. It's, should be rated a little higher. The bridge 11, Grassy Brook Road over Papoose Road is at 60,000, that's fine. Bridge 10, the Grassy Brook Road Bridge near the town office, that's at 60,000 pounds, that's fine. Is a need to change bridge number eight's weight limit. It's over Grassy Brook Road, it's the first bridge on the gravel portion of Grassy Brook Road. It's currently rated at 40,000, it should be increased to 60,000.
That's by the Cornish House.
Oh, yep. And the last bridge, number 15, this is the Parker Brook, this is the bridge over Parker Brook that is on Rear Road. It was rated at 16,000 pounds. We reduced it to 8,000 at one point. We've now repaired it. What should that bridge be weighted as?
Because it's a class four bridge, it doesn't have to be rated. The state will automatically allow 20,000 pounds, I believe.
So, so then, I'm looking to revise the-
Let me set that up.
Town approval of excess weight use for those three bridges, to increase bridge 12 to 60,000, to increase bridge eight to 60,000, and to post bridge 15, or should we-
No, you don't have-
I think because it's a wooden structure, with hand-laid stone up concrete buttments, I don't think, an engineer would not put a-
Would not put a sign on it.
A load rating on it.
So, did you, did you take the signage away?
We did.
So there is no sign on it now?
No.
So it's unweighted? That's what you meant by unweighted? Okay. So, I'm going to have this redone with the two changes on it, and we'll bring it to a vote at the next meeting, if that's okay?
When was that due?
This is, it's a-
Well, there's a, there's-
It's a town policy program.
Right. And basically, what that was to do is to get all bridges all in the same 60,000 pound limit, because that's what the town highways are allowed.
Who's this? That's the bridge, the, the kind of bridges?
I thought it was. Letter being sent minor statutory obligation to report special weight limits for highway bridges.
Oh, that's this one.
No, yeah, there's another form that's due February 23rd.
That's this. This is a policy. Okay, so this is policy, because that's to be updated. All right, so that's that. And then, the next thing that you just said is my next envelope, yes? Yes, all right. What you had is the road mileage, correct?
No.
No.
Restriction, weight restriction filed for- I-
I've seen this.
I'm feeling like maybe Archie might be-
Archie was the one that brought it to our attention because there were roads that, there were bridges that were posted that didn't coincide with what the, the roads were posted, so to be in unison with everything, we, he wants, he wanted to have all the posted 60,000 pounds.
State limits are 16,000 pounds upon any bridge with a wooden floor, wooden subfloor, or wooden stringers on a class three or class four town highway, or 20,000 pounds on a bridge with a wood floor, wood subfloor, or wood stringers on a class one or class two highway, unless otherwise posted by the selectmen of such town. So, it would go to 16,000 pounds now.
According to that, I would-
Right.
Got 16, yeah.
Which is what it was originally.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's been repaired, so that's fine.
So that's fine, all right.
But we don't have to post it.
Right. That's good bridge.
Okay.
Good bridge.
And-
Right, we have to-
Weight restriction filed.
Let's see, this is, this is the old one. Oh, that's why I've seen it.
Okay.
That's why I've seen it, because I was looking at the old one. Okay.
So you were right, 60, 60, 60, 60.
So this is, has to be rewritten?
Okay.
All right.
All right, I'll leave.
Leave that, yep. All right, good, we do this one. I have that here. I read through how to do the road mileage report. Mark, has there been any changes? Here's my question. We extended the pavement on Putney Mountain Road when we did paving last year.
Right.
So it means we have to change this mileage report because we have more hard, more paved road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I have, and Greer Road has already been removed from, from this, correct? The class, maybe we took out-
I think we did remove-
Would that, would that have been a 1.47 mile? Is that what the 1.47 is?
No.
No. No. What does it say about 1.47?
It, it's a class, uh, previous mileage on a class four road was 1.47. Legal tra- trail, we have a one mile legal trail. Maybe, maybe the legal trail was the Greer Road. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what that one is.
No, I don't think it's more than half a mile.
It's not a mile.
Half mile. Ellen Ware Road might be-
The legal trail.
Legal trail.
That might be, because it's close, all right.
But at the same time, we, we did add Merrill Drive, you know, I-
Yeah, but we changed that, yeah.
That's all been-
That's been done before I came on board.
Okay.
Well, my question is, there are some, some statistical numbers here, and rather than just put down the same ones as we did last year, I wanted to ask about the Putney Mountain Road.
Yeah.
So, if we added more pavement to it, has to be changed? Do we know how much, how many, what-
I believe it was like 300 feet, but I'll, I'll get more accurate numbers.
Okay, this has to be done by February 20th.
The 20th.
So we have another-
Then that's the meeting.
February.
Okay.
So, maybe at the next meeting?
Yep, next meeting.
Okay, that was the only thing. Otherwise, everything else appeared to be the same, I saw where we would sign it, so on and so forth, so. And, okay, so I'll hold on to-
Everything else stayed the same?
I believe so, yeah, the class one shouldn't have, uh, we have no class one roads. Class two roads, 4.95 miles. Class three roads, 11.91 miles. State highway, zero. Total number of previous miles recorded was 16 miles, 16.86 miles. There was class four roads previously, it says 1.47, and legal trail, one. So I just wanted to check on the amount that we added to our Putney Mountain Road pavement , 300 feet has to be, because they, they bring it to, to three decimal places, the mileage.
I'll get that for the next meeting.
Okay. All right, this all goes with this.
The bridge policy, are you gonna retype that and, and re-
Uh, I guess.
No.
Unless you can. Would you type it?
Does the board have to approve?
Well, yeah, it's gonna be, it'll be a new ordinance. It'll have to be voted on.
All right, I'll get, I'll ask, once it's even be able to do that, I'm just
As long as you know, know what we're adding to it and what we're doing. Basically, you're just
I think we're doing change, just changing
The weights.
The sixty thousand for the two and sixteen thousand for the third. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Stream altern- alteration report form.
Where are you?
That's for the grant, is it?
You know what, there was another form that be, I should have modified it while we set agenda items. I wrote it down, but I didn't say it. Archie emailed me during Christmas break, a form for stream alterations for the Box Culver that they'll be working on and it requires a two hundred dollar permit. I would like to make a motion that we Do we have to make a motion to pay the permit? To expend money or how to? That was my question.
Approve the expenditure?
Approve the expenditure of two hundred. I'd like to make a motion to approve the expenditure of two hundred dollars for the stream alteration recording permit.
Okay, seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? All those in favor of expending the two hundred dollars for the stream alteration permit, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Then I'll sign it when we, it will come through the accounts payable next month and we'll sign off on it and send that off.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're down to new business.
We could do eight A.
Let's do, let's do it here. Eight A, discuss and vote on delaying the start of the time for the February seventh, two thousand eighteen regular select board meeting due to the LNG High School budget vote. There's an Australian ballot from nine to seven P M. being held here in town hall for the LNG budget. I'd like to make a motion that we start our select board meeting that night at seven thirty.
Before you, before you do the, you, you have a couple of options. You can cancel a meeting, you can reschedule a meeting, or you can make the meeting at a later point. So, those are your three options.
I, I would like to see it on a different day rather than starting at seven thirty. That's my personal opinion. Thursday maybe? What, what date are we talking? We're talking the seventh?
December seventh. This way we could actually attend.
We're on the eighth, let's say.
I can do the eighth. I have a solid voice management board meeting, so I wouldn't be able to do first.
Do we have to have a meeting?
Well, we have to sign a couple
Yeah, you have to do
Could we keep it as a small agenda?
Yeah.
Like just essentials?
It's always essentials.
Yeah, never happens.
They're essentials.
What about the Tuesday before on the sixth?
And that's the day of the
I mean the
That's the day of Layla's break.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, I think we should just keep it the same day and just have just the minimum, no extras, just what has to be signed, period.
It's just what we do every time?
No.
I'm with you, Doc. And you get to zoom in because agenda, we're scarred, rude.
Well, we'll provide feedback before it's official.
I think it's all bad timing because we're one month away from town, town meeting. We still gotta review the town book, right? I mean, we haven't talked about that, the town reports. What's going on with all that, with the auditors and
We don't need to worry about that, Doc. That's, that's a subcommittee.
It's all
It's all take care.
Well, it's not take care.
I think if we start at seven thirty and go an hour, an hour and a half, we only get everything done at night?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, plus we, we have to have people here. Some of the select boards got to be here before because we're civil authority and we have to count votes.
I'll be here.
So.
Will you be here?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna be here all day.
Okay. Will you be here?
I, I was thinking about something else just a minute.
Can we just focus on, so are we, is there anything that is happening with the voting that day that would prevent us from being able to start a select board meeting at seven?
No, seven thirty is fine. Seven thirty is fine.
Seven o'clock is over and we have to count the ballots.
That wouldn't take that long.
I don't like that at all, whatever. What else is new? We'll be over at eleven.
No, no, no. I tried to get, tried to do the
Okay, well, I want to get back to, so the tab, the tab books are being done independently and other people are, are, are proofing it? Is that what's happening at this point?
Well, right now, they're still being assembled.
People are still writing stuff.
Still writing, okay.
The auditors have not yet audited everything. I mean, obviously, we haven't finished a budget yet. So, the auditors don't have any financial stuff to audit because we have not yet approved anything. Once we approve everything, hopefully tonight, the auditors will do their stuff with the financial stuff this weekend, I believe. Samara still has stuff she has to do. The expectation, it's gonna be at the printer on February ninth, one way or another, so.
Okay, so when, who, who would win it rough? I'll move this so that we can
I'm gonna prove it. Julie Lefornia, if she has time, is going to help prove it.
Okay.
I was planning to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, we're not opening this up to the whole world, proofreading this. I understand there's sensitivity about the issue that you guys had last year. But that doesn't mean the entire book needs to be looked at by twelve people.
Right, I agree.
Quite frankly, the process isn't really going to be radically different than it has ever been. And the select board has never really been more, I mean, we're more involved in it because he and I are doing stuff with it, but that doesn't change anything for you guys.
Okay, just wanted, like you were saying, eliminate having what we had happen last year.
Well, we haven't even gotten anything from the school board yet, so quite frankly, there's there's no way, I mean, there's, there's no way to avoid that until they, until they actually give us their stuff, but yeah.
So, again, I'm gonna make a motion that we have our meeting starting at seven thirty on February seventh. And try to get everything undone in an hour and a half.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of having, of opening our select board meeting on February seventh at seven thirty, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll have to warn the different time. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Got that done?
You can leave early if you want.
All right, next item on here, discuss and vote about changing the road foreman position to a road supervisor position beginning July first, two thousand eighteen.
As much as I'm in favor of that, we haven't discussed budget first, though. That I was suggesting that we do.
There's no money associated with B.
Oh, this is the
The title.
Yes, there is. It's an increase, it's an increase in
And on B?
That's C.
That's C.
That's C, that's a separate
I'm gonna go through his best and handle that.
If you approve D, that means you do exceed.
Not necessarily.
Okay, you're not getting a raise, we're getting a board.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the road foreman position to the road supervisor position beginning July first, two thousand eighteen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chris. Any discussion? My discussion part will be that there has to be a job description that has to be written for that position. Hopefully in June for us to agree to. So, job description for the road supervisor position.
You gotta wear a shirt and tie now.
And bow tie and, and shaven.
All those in favor of
Daily.
Of changing the road foreman position to a road supervisor position beginning July two thousand eighteen, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have modified that position. Thank you. Okay, skip, skip, we're gonna skip C, D, E, F.
Actually, no, F can be, F can be approved.
Yep.
F?
I'll let it read.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, 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 F. I'd like to make a motion that we develop, that we add a new position to be known as the Sunny Lane Daycare Property Manager. An hourly salary of twenty-five dollars an hour would go along with that position. And that money is to be paid from the rent collected. No budgetary tax, no, no tax money is used to them.
Seconded.
Seconded by Chris. Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
The, the renter is called Sunny Lane Daycare. Do we have a name for the building itself? Like, do we wanna call it S L D C or what do we wanna call it?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay. It's not the Brookline School anymore.
Okay.
Another discussion point would be a, a job description needs to be developed for the Sunny Lane Daycare Property Managing Position.
Do any of the other jobs have, have?
Town clerk should have a, manager should have a job description system. They all need to
Yeah, they're all in the statutes.
A lot of them are by law.
Yep.
A lot of them by law, but we need to look at and make sure job descriptions are up to date for Sunny Lane Care. Did I, did you vote on it or did I?
No.
I second.
All right, we're doing, we're in discussion. Okay, so I set a meeting to a job description for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adding a new position to be known as the Sunny Lane Daycare Property Manager, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we created a new position. Okay, G, we're gonna skip, wanna do G now?
You can.
Question, 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 question. You're, we're gonna make out a, a description for that position.
So, wait to do that?
Huh?
You want me to, you wanna wait?
No, I don't say to wait, but that's what we're doing at this point.
Yes, we, we need to do a job description for the supervisor and the property manager.
And then, and then at that point, are we gonna find somebody to, to fill our position? Is that the plan?
Well, I was gonna make a motion that we appoint Mark Bills.
I'll second that. No beer, though.
We have a motion and a second for appointing Mark Bills as the property manager of Sunny Lane Daycare. Any discussion? Mark, are you interested?
Yes.
Do you want it now?
Can we back up one second? Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, all right.
The discussion just was to see if he was interested in it. Now, the other thing that, we're still in discussion on this. This, this position is not, since it's not dependent upon budget, raising tax, tax money to pay the salary, I'd like it to go, starting February first, that the twenty-five dollar an hour rate begins in February.
I second it.
Any other discussion? We'll just discuss things though.
Did we, did we vote on appointing Mark first? Like, we didn't do that.
How are you?
Hi, Doc.
I thought maybe I, I
So, just to clarify, well, okay, I mean, it's fine to do it this way. Really, what we probably should have done was we probably should have moved in the motion to create the position
Yeah.
At the rate for it to be created effective immediately.
Yeah.
Which we did not do.
And to be funded by the proceeds of the rent.
Well, that was, that was specified.
Can I mod, can I?
You can modify
Can I move, can I make a, can we do that?
You could just make
Make another motion.
I think the motion's changed.
But we have a motion open on appointing Mark.
It's resolved now.
So, there's a motion on the floor to appoint Mark Bills for the Sunny Lane Daycare Property Manager. And we've had a second on it, we're in discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Mark Bills as the Sunny Lane Daycare Property Manager, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that the salary rate of twenty-five dollars an hour for the Sunny Lane Daycare Property Manager be effective March, February first, two thousand eighteen.
So, it's original not immediately.
Is there a reason we can't?
Is there a reason we can't?
Do it immediately?
Effective, it's in discussion. Okay, we, I will be
Do it immediately.
I will not change my motion to make the effective immediately at the rate of twenty-five dollars be assigned to that position. Okay.
To the position.
Of Sunny Lane Daycare Property Manager. I have a second.
A second?
Seconded by Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of immediately assigning the salary of twenty-five dollars an hour for the Sunny Lane Daycare Property Manager, effective immediately, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passed. All right, discussing H, we have to wait. I, we have to wait. J, we have to wait. We'll move on to old business, look at the time, do a bell. Final budget, okay, write articles. So, here's my line.
We're under old business?
We have old business.
I have a question for the board.
Yes, sir.
Hi, you're right.
Are you old business? We, we discussed We discussed the early, the changing of the town meeting till, to nine A M. And you want to be a contact Carolyn Park on that paper?
Yes.
What would you like me to ask them? When would you like me to ask them that? I was thinking about this.
Four o'clock in the afternoon.
Sorry, can I just ask, clarify, what are, what number are we discussing right now?
We're not. This is under old business.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Yeah, this is just open, that's under old business. I just wanted to very quickly discuss when we all, I could make a recommendation to them when they come down and giving them the opportunities to pick their own time.
If they pick their own time, they like to come to Brookline first because of the way that they, they live geographically and if I went into the last year's minutes, within the first twenty minutes, they, they were there. They were there like, I guess, ten thirty-ish.
Yeah.
We're starting at, if we start at nine.
Oh, so you all intend to tell them that we changed our hours nine and we'd like them to come earlier?
Not later, later. We want to come at
Okay.
No, sooner, no, earlier than, than
Well, you can't come eleven o'clock because you have the school meeting.
That's, that's We're gonna be right in the middle of all discussion of everything we're doing and here they come, trapes in with their
Well, if they come in earlier, then it screws up the first one.
Well, if they're there first thing, we can suspend the, suspend the meeting and have them done right, right away. Or do them after, later on, after the school board.
Well, I think maybe you should contact them and see what would fit in with their schedule and see if it can work with your schedule. Because they may say, you know, we can be there at one o'clock. That would be
Great, yeah.
I'll tell you the fact, they made a point at the last meeting to say they prefer coming first to Brookline because they come down and they go
I hear you.
So, they're gonna wanna come in first.
Well, why can't we change them?
We can change. Well, first class ago was ten thirty.
Right.
We're starting at nine now, not ten. So, it's an hour, be an hour and a half to get through a lot of stuff.
We should, but they, they would have to finish in a half hour. And they, no, they, they
I don't like the idea of them coming in the middle of everything they're doing.
Yeah. It just breaks the train of thought.
Yes, it does. I don't like it at all. Either at the beginning or the end. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree. I mean, ideally at the end.
We have
Ideally at the end. I would say we wanna change it, ideally at the end.
I'll ask them if they can come at the end of the meeting and I'll ask them what they're, where they're at about it rather than giving them a suggestion to come earlier, to come late. Just ask them if they come late.
Right, exactly.
Say to that.
Yeah.
The school, the school meeting starts at eleven.
Then it's usually over by twelve. We break for lunch and in twelve thirty, we start again.
Hopefully, the one coming one, next vehicle home. That'll be that. Okay, so I'll ask them if they, if they can come later and what their schedules and that we are starting an hour earlier now.
Right.
Okay, I'll send out tomorrow.
All right, next thing here is to write articles. Now, I pulled out some of the old articles, looked at two thousand sixteen and the Now, I pulled out some of the old articles, looked at 2016 and the articles and such. Make sure that we have in here. And then I'll need to, when I send out, did I send everybody draft of this?
You did.
I didn't get that. You didn't get one?
I didn't, I looked and I, I didn't have anything for you.
No? Did I not send it out to everybody or just I sent it out tomorrow?
You did send it out. I didn't, I just, I didn't print it out. Because I guess.
I just had to make sure the wording was.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. It's just that I probably had. You've already come part of this.
I did it, well, I did it from.
Right. I think we should consider possibly this, this note. Well, yeah.
Exactly, the way.
I don't know, maybe it's just as.
I just want to make sure that we have enough.
Really a 2015 one based on the way it was named, but, I don't know, but maybe she's included more stuff. Although Gwen had already put in the appropriations, but whatever. I mean, this at least.
Thank you.
So, I just looked at the old book and the first one is to elect a moderator who served from July 1st, 2018 through July 30th, 2019.
So we just.
So the only thing I'll say before we start going through this is that.
Oh, okay.
This isn't.
It should be three or more.
This isn't structured like the actual warrant. I don't know, but Gwen had already pulled last year's and at least made a couple of changes. It doesn't, it doesn't have everything, but it is. It's maybe a.
Well, this one actually we have everything. I don't think the format or whatever, but.
Unless we think we have to have all of the dates of terms.
No.
Not in previous.
Like you have in yours. So that's the other thing, I guess, is it kind of looks like the structure of yours is.
Took it from another book.
Right, I know, but I.
This didn't have, this one didn't have the dates and the other books had the dates for the term length.
So I guess, yeah, I guess, I don't know, did we? Was it done incorrectly last year or?
Wasn't done incorrectly, no. It's just back in, I looked at 2017, you know.
All three years have the date.
Sure.
I don't know what she says.
I'm just saying that is the, we need to elect a moderator and that's the date of his, the moderator's term. Correct?
It is. I guess what I'm gonna say though is we have to not only vote on the generals of this, we have to vote on specifically how it is written word for word tonight. So we can't, so we have to decide, are we using the same structure that was used last year? Or are we going back to the structure that was used a few years before?
I don't care.
Guy, do we have, do we have to put the year the moderator was elected to serve from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019?
Uh, no, because this is just the moderator for the, for the town meeting and it's it's just, do we have to, do we have to elect a moderator?
All right, that's, do we have the same with, with.
Right, because it's not July 1st, it's, it's for the.
From town meeting, the town meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Town meeting is the date that all, all officers take effect that afternoon as soon as they're elected. And then they, they expire, their terms expire the next town meeting.
Because that's why he has to have the.
Doing his organizational meeting.
The organizational meeting, the first.
Meeting after that.
So the first article for the town meeting book should be to elect a moderator.
Right, that's the, always the first.
Okay, we don't need to put the service time. Articles.
Do you have a copy of the last year's annual report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Article two, to elect a town clerk. Article three, to elect a town treasurer. Right?
Okay.
Article four, to elect a collector of delinquent taxes. Article five, to elect all other officers as required by law. Do we need a list of those other officers?
Um, no, the moderator usually does the select board. Whoever, you know, whatever, he'll have a, a copy of what terms have expired and so forth. That's something that we submit to them at the meeting.
When you say we submit to them, I want to know who's we.
Okay.
Something I have to do, I need to know. If it's something you do.
I, I've been doing, I've been doing. It doesn't matter, you know, I, I usually view it with Dave, problems in meetings.
Now, do we have to make a change on, do we have to write an article to correct all of those select board?
No, just, just elect the, the terms that are necessary.
We have to make a correction because we're gonna have to, right, Chris and you.
No.
Whose terms are expiring?
Mine's gonna expire this year.
It is?
And Chris's also.
And Chris was the yearly, but I was supposed to be three years, but they only put it in as two years.
Yeah, I'm moving, I'm filling out an old position, but I'm.
But we're changing it from, from a, to a one year.
Yes.
Your position's usually going to a one year?
It would go, yeah, it would be the one that's.
This year, but not, not tonight?
No, that.
It was always a one year.
Really?
I have a position.
It was all.
What was, what was wrong was Gwen's was a two year when it should have been a three year.
Right. Yeah, something like that.
It all changed when we went from a three, a three man board to a five man board and they were trying to scatter. Right. So they scattered them, right?
So we have three, three, three?
Three, 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 two, one.
Three, three, three?
Right.
Yeah.
Two, one.
Two and.
Okay, so the people that vote this time are Brian and Chris?
We have a two, a two year position and a one year position. Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, what will be, what will be voted on at town meeting of the two positions will be the position that Gwen is currently occupying.
She's a three, right?
But will be a three year term rather than a two year term that was done previously. And Chris's position, which will continue to be a one year term. The position Chris is currently occupying.
Okay, those two.
So really the, yeah.
Okay, so we got this right now.
So that's something Guy will have to let the moderator know.
Yeah, I'm gonna review, I'm gonna go over all the terms. I'm gonna call the Vermont League Cities and Towns and see, make sure that everything is what we have to do and.
So everybody knows it's a sort of wildfire over.
I mean, I'm gonna correct all this in the town report and make the wording of the terms and the expirations.
All right, I just want to make sure the terms, you know, do we have three, three year terms? Or do we have two, three year terms and three and two? I, I don't know what the.
There's three threes, one, two and a one.
I, I don't know that.
Right, three threes.
Because it's all.
Yeah, I mean, I.
In other words, you always have to have three people coming up for.
Every year, someone, every year, right.
I'm gonna, I need to get it correct. I, I'm confused to be honest with you.
The three, three is a two and a one.
I agree with that, I'm on the terms, I know.
I don't know if that's a.
So I do have, I do have from 2017 that it said we would discuss warning the physician Gwen's in as a three year term. So the word warn did come up.
Yeah, so it has to be warned because it was not correctly recorded.
I guess.
In the minutes.
I can re-guess, I can re-guess.
So how do you do that? He said they had note that they had to warn my select board because there was a mistake on it. So they have to warn it to correct it.
It was recorded incorrectly.
I can see this is gonna be.
Do you pick up stands?
I will, I will call the VLCT tomorrow and see what the statutes, what, what has to be done. Because I, right now I'm speculating and I, I don't like to speculate because I don't know the real answer.
So do we need an article worn for, the question is, do we need an article worn for a mistake that was in the year previous? All right, the next article, so article five is to elect all other officers, including select board people. Article six, shall the town accept the auditor's report? Article seven, this is what we have to work on. Shall the town vote to approve the general and highway fund expenditures net of non-tax budgeted revenues for the town as follow? The amount to be raised by taxes for the general fund, the amount to be raised by taxes for the highway, the amount to be raised by taxes for special articles and the total amount to be raised. So we'll have to work on that tonight. That's, that must be finished tonight. What, next article, to see what dates the town will vote to collect taxes. Article nine, can we come up with this number? To see what, to shall the town voters appropriate? What was the total number of appropriations?
Uh, I got the, all that, appropriations.
6206, $6,206 bucks, so six bucks.
Shall the town voters appropriate $6,206 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of the following organization?
That was last year's approved.
6206 is the number.
Well, let me ask you this, does that, that does not contain the $100?
No, it's not correct. It does not.
Very good.
Because that's worn.
That's worn.
But does it contain the 25 for the library that you have as?
Okay, so 11 and 12 are for the extra, for the new ones. So 11 and 12 is fine, right?
It's the appropriation for the library.
But we already put that in the budget, didn't we? I think we did.
Yeah, we did. For the 25, we approved it.
We did vote for it.
Yeah, we approved it.
Yeah, you approved it. You don't have to have a.
Why do you have to have?
You don't have to have, no, you know, you're just increasing or decreasing. You can, the select board can do that.
Yes.
Okay.
So we don't have to have one in for that new one, just for the new one, right? Girdas.
Girdas, yes.
We do.
Yes. It's not a statute. It's where the town has been doing things for all the years. Whenever there was a new appropriation, they warned it as a separate article.
Okay. But we don't have to for the additional 25 or more for left. That we already approved. So we don't have that as an article 12.
Okay, so you don't need to worry about the increase. Article 12 is out. Thank you. So only article 11 is in you. And article 10, shall the, this is the wording and I looked at this as something also we discussed earlier this year. Shall the town vote to change town meeting to the first, second or third day preceding the first Tuesday in March pursuant to, and that's the statute. Except I didn't have the little squiggly bit for the paragraph number.
Oh, bring up an interesting.
So either Saturday, Sunday or Monday preceding.
To get that little squiggle thing.
That's gotta be a freaking discussion in there.
Who's you go out that had brought this up? Changing the day of the meeting?
Yeah, we talked about Saturday, but then, then David Parker was here and said it wasn't a good idea and that's why we came up with the idea of coming up at 1:00.
Well, you either are happy with it or you ask for a change. That's the.
So you don't want to change?
I would be open to coming on a Saturday.
Me, me too.
If we want to open it to term discussion, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me personally, I would love to see it on a different day because more and more elections are coming on the same day. And it really is, you know, it's, it's a bit of a hassle. But, you know, the voters can make their decision.
I don't want you to misunderstand what my intent was. Sure, I'm looking at it on Saturday.
Try and get more people to come.
Exactly. But according to Dave Parker, you've tried before and didn't work. People, oh, I didn't take them on weekend. I'm, oh, I gotta go.
But we said we would put it on, then we would put it to the voters.
And they can, they can discuss it.
Yeah.
But this is.
What town meeting is for?
Instead of Saturday.
So the town, shall the town vote to change town meeting to the first, second and third day preceding the first Tuesday in March? Yeah, so town meeting is on first Tuesday, March. Excuse me, first Tuesday. It would either have to be the fifth, the fourth, if it was this year. It would be the fifth, the fourth and the third.
But does it have to be written this way?
Yes, that's what I pulled out of the.
I'm making it confusing.
Yeah.
So first day preceding the first Tuesday would be Monday.
The first and the third day preceding.
Yeah, okay.
Monday, Sunday or Saturday.
Now, would this, shall the town vote to change town meeting? So.
It's a floor vote.
To the first Saturday.
The way they're gonna, oh, can't. I pulled the language from the.
I'm, I'm understanding it now. So this would be a binding vote.
These are the statutes. That's the way the statute's written. Three days prior to the.
It's really nicely confusing.
Keep in mind.
The first season would be Monday. The second would be Sunday. The third day preceding would be Saturday. That's what that.
The thought you have to keep in mind is, well, this is good and I'm all in favor of it. We're also gonna have to realize that you know it's gonna come up that we change the time. We're either, if we're to 9:00, this will be the first time that I've ever noticed it, 9:00 ever. So it'll be interesting to see how the reaction of the public of the town. And then we're throwing that in there too.
They're gonna say, why didn't you vote at night for the 9:00, you mean?
We did vote because we were like.
They might have an opinion.
The whole concept is to engage the town into more attendance at the meetings.
And we'll say that, but I, I'd be really surprised if nobody brought it up. Well, you all changed it to 9:00, now you wanna consider changing to the other three days and then that whole discussion's gotta come in.
So can I just ask a, can I just ask a technical question about this? What are we actually going to vote on?
That.
Okay, so what does that mean? So if we say yes, then next year it can be Saturday, Sunday or Monday?
No, no, they will vote.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
They will vote to change the, the town.
To the first, second or third day.
Which day you want it?
So the voters, okay, so the, the way the vote is gonna be constructed is everyone in favor of changing it to the first day proceeding, first Tuesday?
I think what happened is they'll.
The law already.
Everyone in favor of the.
I think they'll second that. Which, I think what will happen is Dave, Dave Parker will put the whole article up for vote as to why you want to consider it. And they say, okay, we'll consider it. Now the opener up.
They're not considering it. They're voting to change it. Not voting to consider.
Okay, the bottom line is that you could incorporate the word Saturday because that's the day you're looking for. You can incorporate the word Saturday prior to the town meeting, which will fall within the statutes of the first, second or third day.
I would go that. I would actually say.
Then we can get.
That's a wild theory.
Second, we can. Is that the third day proceeding?
Yes, so we could change it to, shall the town vote to change town meeting day to.
Saturday.
The Saturday preceding the first Tuesday.
Preceding the first Tuesday, getting rid of first, second or third day.
That's worse.
That'll be less.
I think they run that.
So we're saying it's gonna be, shall the town vote to change town meeting day to?
The Saturday.
The Saturday?
Preceding the first Tuesday in March pursuant to.
That's, that's better than giving them a choice to fight about it.
I agree.
Well, there's another reason. Because what will happen is. You know, they don't have school on Saturdays there.
Right, that's true.
It really works out good for the town.
Right, but we'll see. This is, you would have asked the town to consider changing it to one of those days. And then you, then you would be bringing it up to the floor, anybody have it open? And the first person would say, well, I wanna do it on Mondays.
I, it's my, it's gonna be the first Saturday in May.
So can I just make, so we're, I think with the wording on that article, can I just make a suggestion? That should be article 11 and the appropriation for Girdas should be article 10.
Yes. And you know what?
It doesn't make sense to split up the appropriations.
Article 13 can be moved up too. We talked about that as well. I don't care the order of it.
No, I'm just saying we shouldn't split up the appropriations with this because quite, quite likely the discussion of this thing is gonna go on for a long time and then we're gonna go back.
But I don't think you have to do article 12.
I'm gonna do my justice.
No, you brought that up.
Get the legislators to come later because. And I'm gonna do my justice project to get the legislators to come later, because we split this up and put the freaking school. The whole idea of coming early nine o'clock was to get all this done before lunch.
Maybe the Saturday before school.
That'll come after, if they can make, oh, well.
That's, I would, that's a very good point, move Article 10 to the end.
To the very last one.
Yeah.
To the very last article, because they don't have to be...
Right, in a, in this order.
That's true. Okay. I've got the budget, and you've got thirty minutes.
I would like Article 13 to be higher up too.
What about the change to nine o'clock, is that just your decision?
That's our decision.
And that's what I was saying, you know it's gonna come on, why, why it was done.
And it'll just have to get posted way ahead of time.
Yeah, we'll have to sign out, it'll be in the...
It'll be the poll three played up, and town has a... I wonder if we can, if Dave's ever, we can highlight that starting from the book.
Municipal funds.
Town will get a full, high percent...
Now, looking back from previous years, we did that.
Newspaper, front porch forum, three locations, and in the book, they'll mail that. So it'll be, like, in seven different places, so...
So...
A lot of people who come town, they're shot to one anyway.
Well, because, like, people are...
Yeah, that's fine, for one. It's very bright, I mean...
So can we go back to the articles? Because we're missing, last year, and I think in previous years, there was an article of, shall the voters of the town of Rockland vote to collect its current taxes by its town treasurer pursuant to blah, blah, blah.
I think we just had to do that for one year, and now it's gonna be...
No, we have to do that every year.
It has to be done every year. But I remember Guy and, and Samara were discussing, and it has to be done every year.
Okay, so what, what is that article?
It's Article...
I don't ten, what are the last words?
I'm honestly not sure what article it was, that was fine. That's gonna be, the Girdas is gonna be Article 10. I guess that one will be Article 11. And then, are there, so are we discussing warning? Putting those surplus towards an audit reserve or a tax abatement?
Uh, yeah, we are discussing, it's a little place to put it, and what number is actually gonna go in there, but, so...
Was there, was there also an article in regards to appropriating, or is that in the highway budget? The money that we set aside for the paving, was that a separate article?
Paving.
I think it has its own.
Yeah.
Paving?
Yeah, we always put $25,000 a year toward paving.
Thirty-nine thousand now.
Last year was thirty, yeah, alright. So is that, is that gonna be warned as a separate article, was that in the article?
That wasn't an article, just put in the budget.
That's not an article, just put in the budget.
Just put it in the budget.
Just the, it's just a line item.
It's a line item.
Alright, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It's always a line item, I guess.
Alright, so, we said, by this sheet, we can always modify the numbers here, but Article, Article 11 is gonna get moved closer to the appropriations item.
Right, it's now Article 10.
Right. And, okay, so that's now 10, and...
Article 11 is the shall the town vote to change town meeting day to...
Or that should be the last one of the, or it can be the last article after everything else is done, doesn't matter.
We think it'll be the very last one.
Next to the last, I guess we are.
Because it's gonna be a big discussion.
Alright, we have to add the article that was just pointed out, which was Article...
He's got the wording for it already.
Sixteen. Last year it was?
It was 10 last year.
Last year it was 10. Shall the voters of the town of Rockland vote to collect its current taxes by its town treasurer pursuant? So that one you'll have to...
That's gonna be Article 12.
It's gonna be Article 11.
Okay, so we'll have that, vote to collect the taxes by its town treasurer. And then we go to, shall the town apply the budget surplus from 2016, 2017 budget in the amount? What was the whole town surplus?
That's a good question.
She gave it to us last time.
I don't remember.
It's five thousand.
She kept saying it. It was somewhere around there, isn't it?
Let me figure that, write it down. It's not any of...
Article 7 is shall the town approve general and highway expenditures, net of non-tax, amount to be raised by a general fund and highway fund, and amount to be raised by taxes for special articles. What is that in the highway Article 7?
I guess that's the way it has been warned sometimes in the past. But not always.
Alright, I don't, I don't have my hands on that number.
What are you looking for, the amount of?
The surplus. Because we wanted to apply some of it for tax abatement, some of it for audit reserve, and some of it for capital improvements. My question is, I thought that one of the articles, not last year, but the year before, voted to, to do 2,000 dollars for the audit reserve. I thought that it would be done every year.
No, it has to be voted on each year. Each year, and, see, it was two or three years ago. We voted a thousand or two thousand dollars for the audit.
And then we didn't do it last year because we had a deficit.
Right.
So, we'd like, I'd like to put 2,000...
And the reason it has to be voted every year is because it's not spent. If it was spent each year, then, you know, you, it's, it's going, it's going into a dedicated fund.
The tax abatement.
Did you come up with that total, what, what the surplus was?
The tax abatement.
Well, here's, Samara tells us what the, uh...
I, I came according to the time on the agenda.
Yes, we were slipping right on through you.
Okay, cool.
Alright, we just have a couple of questions.
They wanna know how many million dollars we have in surplus.
How we still vote here.
Well, I'll tell you what report to look at, do you have your, you know?
See, I have mine, I'm looking for that surplus.
It's at the bottom of, you know, this, this part, the town trust amendment. Okay, hold on, I'll get it.
Reserve of future...
It's rough, it's a little over $5,000.
So what we wanna do is have what we want in mind to present to the town.
That's okay, take your coat off, relax.
Right here, it's on page six, Guy.
Page six?
Page 10.
Page six.
And I'm operating surplus of which, of which one?
It's...
Five thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Thank you, Guy.
What is it? Five thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Okay, if you look at the very bottom, if you're looking at your revenue and expenses, or...
Page six, okay.
At whatever page number it is. It should be, the very, very bottom line, and, oh, I see, I have some formulators inside, right here. It's right before the footnotes.
Yes.
And it's basically, it's the difference between revenues minus expenses. If our expenses were more than our revenues, we'd have a deficit. In, in private corp, you know, private business term, it's our net profit, but it's not a profit, it's a surplus. Okay?
So the, if the, if the surplus is $5,456, I'd like to have the article warn that 2,000 other be applied towards an audit reserve.
This was done on...
That would leave 3,456. I'd like to suggest that $2,500 get put into a tax abatement fund. Called it a reserve.
Is that enough for the big party?
Tax abatement reserve.
Is that enough?
Yeah, well, right now the abatement that I'm, I'm gonna ask for is $2,148 for the cost damage. So that, that'll cover this year. Oh, you know, it's not gonna cover this year, because it's next year.
But we'll already have a reserve to draw from, in case we run into a deficit situation. So like, if we, if it caused a $2,100 deficit, for example, if, if, which is a big if, then we would say, oh, but we put $2,500 in reserve already to cover this. And so we would just release that reserve. We can modify that number, we can just run this, so the third number is, if we put 2,000 in audit reserve and 2,500 in tax abatement reserve, we would have $956 left over for a capital improvements. Or we can just make that number $500 and put the rest into the tax abatement. I don't know how you wanna handle it. I wanna play with that, now play with the last bit of money. Or you can use it to, say, or we'll reduce the current year taxes we have to raise by the amount...
$956?
Yeah.
Or, I, I think we need to have some money in capital, because we are spending this. We've got two buildings, and...
But, okay, and the capital would come out of the fund one? I don't know, you guys decide. And then we have to see how the voters vote. And that's all you can do, right?
Now, correct me on the audit, the reason we have to warn it each year is because we don't spend it.
We don't spend it.
Right, okay.
We don't spend it, and...
So we put it in a, in a form?
And we talked about, we amended the, the year I put in that article, shall we do it every year? People said, wait a minute, wait a minute, we need to vote that every year. Which was probably a good thing, because, you know, I had no problem.
So 54, 56 minus 2,000, okay? And, so tax abatement reserve and capital improvement.
Alright, so what's the audit reserve?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
And tax abatement, 2,000?
I suggested 25, 25.
500? Yeah?
Considering we have a possible abatement of 22. And that leaves $956 left over to put into a capital improvement reserve for...
Town buildings?
Town buildings. Could be any of our buildings that we all... Could be for the tree, could be for Sunny Lane, could be something for the electric...
Town office?
Town office.
So we're saying capital...
I like, I like your...
Air conditioner?
Generator.
Generator.
Well, it's a, it's a capital improvement fund, it'd be used for the...
Capital improvement, reserve.
Remember, we need to have the exact wording, because we are voting on this two nights.
Town building.
And it will be final then.
Yeah, and that will be in your warning.
956.
So capital improvement reserve for town buildings?
956.
Actually, I think if you just put capital improvement reserve, that's sufficient. Because that way, if you wanted, like, you know, capital improvements by sort of, you know, are per se for large capital, capital improvements, like usually buildings. It's not gonna be highway, no. It's from the general fund. I don't know if you need to be that specific.
I think the capital improvement reserve.
So we'll just say capital improvement reserve, and it's 956.
956.
And is that what we want to do? Or is that...
At this point, we haven't really discussed for a while.
You guys have to discuss and...
Total budget, where the bottom line is.
How do you feel about this, the surplus? This is the surplus.
I don't know yet.
I think that makes sense.
So did you guys, you all, like, I printed out extra copies of the, of the estimated municipal tax rate?
Yes.
I have it on my phone.
Oh, good. You'll take it for now.
Yeah, I forgot, well, I'll take one.
Okay, so... Staying with the...
You probably have one, but if you want another, this is the estimated X rate. I emailed it to you.
Yeah, I got it. That was an email from...
Okay.
Sticking with the articles.
Okay, keep, go bake your articles, and we'll get out of there.
Let me try to get this up. So this is gonna be Article 12 now.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be, I don't know, this is probably gonna be Article 12.
Well...
Did you, one, was left off?
Oh, and we need to vote to collect...
That's, that's Article 11. And...
For the town treasurer to collect the taxes.
Yep, that's gonna be Article 11.
What's Article 10 then?
Article 10 is Girdas, Eagle One Rescue.
Okay, that's Article 10.
Yeah.
Article 11 is the shall the voters of town reply and vote to collect her instincts by town treasurer. Then Article 12 will be the budget surplus that we just discussed.
Okay, and what was the shall the town vote to change town meeting day?
Well, everyone seemed to want it to be the last one, so...
Okay.
Well, next to the last one.
It'll get a number once we, next to the last one. Once we decide if there are any other articles we have to write.
Alright, can I just say, we should probably read this verbatim before we approve it? So that's kind of what we're doing.
Yeah, it's gonna be really difficult, because it's piecemeal for multiple things at this time. Yeah, I, I agree, we should, so, I'm not sure how we're gonna do that, but...
Let me read it, and then we'll just...
Well, I'll be honest, I think we should have this printed out. I mean, I think it's...
Well, here's my, my one thing though, is you're up against your...
But sorry, we haven't finished discussing if we actually have something to vote on yet. So let's, let's table worrying about how we...
Just know that you need to finish tonight.
Oh, I'm very well aware. As the person who asked to put all of this into the book, I'm very well aware of that. So, Article 13 then, no, there's no other articles that we think we need to...
Well, the other question, the only, the only article I was concerned about was the $30,000 for the salt chid. Do we have to...
Salt chid?
No, we don't have to raise any additional funds.
Okay, so we, we have sufficient funds to cover that.
We have no special highway article.
And we don't do the paving, that's all in the...
We have no special articles because we have 238,000 still in, well, we have, we have a moving amount of surplus in the highway fund. And we, I also researched and found out that should we need to pay an invoice before we receive matching grants?
Yeah, yeah.
Should we need to do that? We can do a short-term borrowing without having to vote on.
And the $30,000 that's raised every year for pavement is not something we have to write an article for?
It's in that.
No, it's part of the...
Yeah, that's what he was saying.
The state highway, state highway budget? Yeah, the state highway grants are in the budget already.
Just wanted to touch base with you.
Okay, so then if there, if there aren't gonna be any other articles, then the shall the town vote to change town meeting, blah, 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 will be Article 13. And then Article 14 will be to transact any other business immediately for this meeting.
And how many articles do we have last year?
13.
13, okay.
So I think we're gonna have some discussion, though, maybe Samara can help us allow Article 7 and the wording of Article 7, because...
Which is Article 7? Shall the town vote to approve the budget, the highway fund?
She does the sample of these.
Oh. Just the regular articles that...
The regular article. The, the total, okay, so how we do that? On that budget estimate sheet?
Yep.
Essentially, what, the top, very top line that's in a, in a big square on the newest copy?
300,116?
300,116, yeah. Here, this one, right there. That is the total of the bottom line that we determine in our normal operating budget for highway and town office combined.
So 300,116 is the total municipal taxes to be raised?
Right, and if people wanna double-check my math, I will never say don't do it. But I have checked it a number of times.
Thank you.
And there aren't enough eyes in the world to catch all the little details.
So setting aside for the moment the number, because unfortunately, we are going to have discussions yet to determine if that number is right. Because we haven't finalized all of the line items. So the number might change between now and.
Number.
Yep.
What you do is open last year's book and see how that article was warned. Because it's warned every year.
Yeah, the thing is, it's warned differently every year.
Yeah, because there are different situations.
Right, so.
Sometimes we're applying a surplus, sometimes we're not. But the general wording is shall the town vote to rec, to approve the town, whatever it says.
Shall the town vote to approve the general and highway.
Operating.
Fund expenditures, net of non-tax budgeted revenues.
You have, yeah, net of, net of non, right, that's right. That is right, Frank amended, I don't remember about that.
Shall the town vote to approve the general and highway fund expenditures, net of non-tax budgeted revenues for the town as follows.
Amount to be raised by taxes for general fund, amount to be raised by taxes for highway fund. And that's, and you don't, you, you warn your separate articles separately.
Right.
You're, you're the separate articles.
You are, and it's been.
For a month, the, the total, or to, for a total of.
300,116 dollars.
So you're voting the total amount, we don't vote our funds separately.
Great, I guess what we're a little confused by is that when do we break it down? Because in some years past, it has been.
Some books.
Amount to raise, to be raised by taxes for general fund, amount to be, within the same article.
Yep.
Amount to be raised by taxes by highway fund, amount to be raised by special articles, which I don't think we have any.
We, we don't.
Amount to be voted on.
The special articles.
There's more detail than last year's warning was.
The special articles, the only special article that we have are appropriations. That's considered a special article. So see, if we draw that out.
So do we have to, so what are we saying, do we have to break it down?
Yeah, we have to warn the special articles separately.
Yeah, not, not the special articles, but do we need to, does article 7 need to say anything beyond total municipal taxes, taxes to be raised? Like it did last year?
No, it does not.
Okay, okay.
You can, but you're not obliged to.
Okay.
Because we're already saying that amount includes both funds.
Right.
Right.
If you want, you know, it's.
When you say.
Towns do it both ways.
Okay.
So you understand that. But you can vote one total sum.
You raised.
You can vote two separate sums.
290 last year.
I just reviewed some of the emails that you had sent back and forth tomorrow last year about this.
29222.
And I think, I think they suggested.
It's that, it's that, yeah, we have the data to put it into two, to say, this is how much we're raising for town, this, these are the expenses of town, these are the expenses of highway. This is the total.
Two lines.
I mean, it's.
I don't know.
It's two more lines, you know, it's like add them up for everybody, or make them go back and look at the bottom line of all the reports to figure out which is which. So I think, I think we've been trying to move towards more transparency, so more detail rather than taking away detail. Am I right?
Yeah, no, I think.
So before we can do that general fund and highway fund, we have to get rid of the salaries.
I mean.
You have to make sure that you've approved everything that we've talked about. Or if you're going to change it, I'm going to go turn on my computer so that I can plug in new numbers so we have the number tonight.
We haven't changed nothing.
But we have, all right, in your copy that you gave us on January 9th, which is the latest and greatest, we have everything filled in. We, I.
We do, and the only thing I remember there being a question on, I think I updated it for all the salary changes.
Which we haven't voted on yet.
Which we haven't voted on yet.
Which we have to.
That's in here?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's in this?
Yes, I updated it for all the new data from the last meeting.
Yes.
I.
Yeah, I did.
I sent, I sent you out a projection of recycling because there was some.
I have that.
Whether or not you had enough in, enough too much about right, you know, if there were going to be any changes. So if there are any changes, and then the biggest thing you, I always look at is what the heck would be the overall tax rate?
Well, tax rate went up considerably, you know, which is normal. It's an 8% increase.
Oh, I got information.
Not, not the taxes we don't have control about.
Right.
Not, just our municipal tax rate.
Right.
So compared to.
1031.
Well, we went from one of the.
Once he had his.
All right, can I have a message again? Where's my gallows? All right, we need to, we're doing one thing at a time. So the articles, except for the number for article 7, looks pretty much set, correct?
Yeah.
So what we're going to do now is go back to what Samara is saying, is that the numbers that she gave us in the updated report included the 50 cent addition to the bookkeeper. It's just a check of, it's the $24 for road supervisor, the $500 for the animal, those, those things that we have not voted on. So I'd like to go back to the agenda, right?
Okay.
To the items on the agenda that we skipped under new business.
Okay, but I just want a clarification, I want to understand that what we're raising for taxes based on these figures is 306,957 dollars, including the increases on all the people.
300, 306, 300,116 dollars.
What's the 306,957?
What line are you looking at?
Oh, we got the bottom.
You, that's not the part we vote on.
Okay.
The part you vote on is the top line.
Right.
Article 7 warning is this one.
Okay.
Maybe I should label it article 7, well, when you get your numbers in, you could put that in.
And that's including the raises?
That included the increase in the budget level based on increase in people's rates.
These are these two other numbers, the 306,422 and the 306,957.
This is how, what, so you understand the 306,422 includes special articles.
Right.
Because.
Appropriations.
The point of this spreadsheet is to try to say, what overall is our, is our tax bill going to look like? Is it going to go up, down, sideways, it's always going up lately, but, but some of these numbers we're not in control of. So I highlighted the audit, and anything that looks highlighted means that I, I want to add some data to it. So in this case, the audit reserve article, we're not raising extra money, but I'm going to put a footnote to that. So we're not, we're not asking for more cash this year.
Right, right.
You're taking a surplus.
Right.
Um, the other one, the VETs exemption, that is a makeup to the, it's a little piece of the education tax that our town has to make up because we give a larger than $10,000 exemption to our VET. The state allows you $10,000 of tax exemption. If we go up anything above that, the, the state, we have to make up the, the education piece. So that amount is based on the education tax rate, which we don't have yet.
Right.
And then the bottom numbers, just add the education tax rate on the bottom so that people know what their total tax rate is likely to do. And I credit Frank Rucker for coming up with that because he, he's created like, okay, so is our percent going up, down, whatever, yeah.
So basically, the major difference in what we're seeing in last year's upper box and this year's upper box is that we've included recycling in the upper box.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
So we're pretty much.
Yes, we're pretty much flat.
Okay.
Yes, yes, exactly.
That's clever.
So it's up because something that was in special articles last year is now in operation.
Right, part of our budget.
So I mean, we're not level flooded really, we're less than level flooded. Because that's 11,000 bucks and we went up 9,800 dollars, and that's including the salary increases.
Well, if you go all the way down to total municipal taxes to be raised before local, the second square box.
Uh huh.
And you look all the way over to the, the decrease.
328.
There's a decrease in budget of 3 cents per, you know.
Yeah, .031.
.03.
Uh huh.
So 3 cents per hundred dollars essentially. So, and that's largely because we didn't have, we don't miss, we cut some expenses, we cut supplies expenses.
And we don't have the.
And we don't believe that, those legal deficits. We don't involve the legal fees.
All right, so these three numbers are for us to understand that first.
Overall, we're pretty much flat.
Okay. 300,116 is the amount to be raised by taxation. If you were to include the appropriations, if all of the appropriations are approved, our budget would be 306,422 dollars. And with the exemption of taxes for our VET, I couldn't find on that paperwork that, I went through that exemption.
$40,000 that we.
Do we have one that who gets an exemption?
It's in the article hangouts in the.
Yeah, and.
So I couldn't find it.
They already care reset, you can't find them, they're doing a little back end one.
Okay.
That's, I don't know, it's obvious, but.
And really.
I'm not buying it. Do, shh, sorry.
Off, this is off topic, but afterwards, I'll tell you who to talk to, who knows how to look into that, besides the listers. The listers really have to.
Okay, I'm not worried, I just, I wasn't on the forum.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so, um, understanding that this amount, the total municipal taxes to be raised, 300,116 dollars, I'd like to go back to the agenda and go through the.
Okay.
Votes that we, that we tabled at that time.
Yep.
So, back to the agenda, H C. Discuss and vote on assigning the pay rate of $24 per hour for the road supervisor in 2018, 2019 budget. Can I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
I have a motion for, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of assigning the pay rate of $24 an hour for the road supervisor position in the 2018, 19 budget, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. D, discuss and vote on adding a $500 stipend for the animal control officer position. May I have a motion?
I motion that we give a $500 stipend to the animal control officer for all that that person has to do through.
Neither.
Uh, make a, second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Chris, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adding a $500 stipend for the animal control officer position, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. E, discuss, discuss and vote on increasing the pay rate for the bookkeeper by 50 cents an hour for the 2018, 2019 budget.
It's not bookkeeper, isn't that the assistant?
She's assistant, assistant treasurer who does the bookkeeping.
So how do you want me to word it, because there's like five assistant treasurers.
No, but there's two, three, I would say the, the assistant, the assistant treasurer responsible for bookkeeping. That would be Louise, you could use her name.
Uh, it has to be by, by position, doesn't it?
No, well, by position, by current, the current position, the current. Because whoever might come in, like, what if she reads or something, God forbid?
Yeah, really.
She, you know.
Don't talk like that.
But, you know, then you want to have the opportunity to revise, well, you can always, select board can always revise salaries. It's not really part of the budget.
Okay.
Discuss and vote on increasing the pay rate for the assistant treasurer responsible for bookkeeping, did you say? Responsible. By 50 cents an hour. Um, can I have?
I make a motion to increase the pay rate for the assistant treasurer responsible for bookkeeping by 50 cents an hour for the 2018, 19 budget.
And also. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of increasing that pay rate for the assistant treasurer responsible for, for bookkeeping, 50 cents an hour, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, thank you. Um, we did F. We did G.
You did F already?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, she discussed. Okay, I'd like to make, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to modify the hourly rate for the chair of the auditor's position to $15 an hour. Can I have a second?
Is that covered?
Uh, seconded.
Seconded, okay, any discussion?
Is that within our budget?
They never go over budget, so it, it has probably, it has no impact on the budget.
You shouldn't say never, but they haven't yet.
Right, can I make the motion? Somebody seconded it? You, we seconded it, any more discussion, any other discussion?
Sorry, who actually moved it?
I did.
You did.
Bruce seconded it. Pre discussion.
Samara raised her hand.
Samara?
I raised my hand because, um, I, I noted there was one other change in the budget. We, we authorized a different rate for the select board clerk and I put that in the budget.
I added it, yes, it's going to be on here.
Okay, good, thank you, all right.
But we still haven't voted on.
Maybe, can't keep going.
We still haven't voted on the motion that's been.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, all those in favor of, uh, change modifying the hourly rate for the auditor chair to 15 dollars an hour, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Discuss and.
I'm sorry, that was as of the 2018, 19 budget.
That's correct, 2018, 19 budget.
We didn't say that.
Aye. Discuss and vote on adding a $500 stipend for the position of town road commissioner.
For the first year?
For 2018, 19.
The current town road commissioner has objection to a 500.
It's the position, he can donate it back if they want. This is for the 2018, 19, we haven't appointed one yet. I'd like to make a motion to add a $500 stipend.
Just a moment, I'd like to have a discussion.
I.
There'll be a discussion once.
Okay, fine, fine, fine.
I'd like to make a motion that we add $500 stipend for the town road commissioner.
I seconded.
Seconded by, well, any discussion?
Yeah, what you doing? Explain. Town road commissioner being argued?
Yes.
This year has.
Speaking of $500?
Yes.
He showed objection to it, visibly, I saw him say it there.
He can object, but he doesn't have to accept it.
He doesn't have to accept it.
We just think he's worth it and this is our way of saying that.
The position of the commissioner is a, a lot of times like the animal.
This year.
Okay, okay, and my question is, Samara, was this included now in the increase?
Yes, it was part of the budget that we talked about, I thought.
I, I actually, no, it's.
I don't think so.
It's not in, it's not in this budget. Um, it would be.
Because it was not something we.
And it wouldn't be in the town operating budget, I, I expect I would put it in the.
Was the animal control officer in there?
The animal control officer, you can look at it, it's there. Everything's there, just, no, this is news to me, this one is new. This one is not in there, so they would add $500 to, um, I don't know, I guess you would put it, I don't know if you put it in town. See, historically, the road commissioner's always been on the select board. So would it go in the highway fund or would it go in the administrative?
Administrative.
So you want to put it in the, in the operating fund?
Correct.
Well, that would add $500 to the operating fund, if, if it's approved.
Well, personally, I'm good with it, just because.
It's a small question?
Just because the people that are doing the hard work in the town, I'd like to encourage them to keep doing it and not, excuse the expression, for a lousy $500.
Pays for printer ink.
What's that?
It pays for the printer ink, paper.
You know, it's just a, it's just a thank you from, from the town.
It's a road commissioner's event. So.
I'm good with it, first one.
So I'm going to add plus 500.
No, it's not going to break the bank.
Any other discussion?
We're not taking $5,000 alone.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor of adding a $500 stipend for the position of the town road commissioner, for 2018, 2019, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Okay, J, discuss and vote on changing the rate for the recording clerk to $75 a meeting.
It's in the budget.
I have a little, a little thought about that.
Well, let me get the motion and then we'll do a discussion.
Okay.
So.
I'll make the motion to change the rate for the recording clerk to $75 a meeting for the 2018, 19 budget.
Number two.
And Bruce seconded it? Okay, any discussion?
Uh, discussion. At seventy-five dollars a meeting, that comes to eighteen hundred dollars a year. Um, I find it a little difficult to pay the recording clerk more than the select board. I just...
I understand what you're saying. Recording clerk...
No, no, I, I, you know, I...
It's, it's nowhere near what our experience, recording clerk gets in from the other people that he works for. It's quite a bit less. And it's difficult to find someone who will...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that he...
It's eighteen hundred a year?
He's gonna get eighteen, you know, that's eighteen hundred dollars a year.
Do you want me to take seven? I have eighteen seventy-five in the budget.
Okay.
Seventy-five, um, seventy-five?
I don't remember if it was based on counting the number of meetings.
Eighteen hundred dollars.
So I'll take seventy, so take seventy-five dollars out of it.
Right? It's, we have twenty-four meetings.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, although I think historically, for whatever reason, it looks like it's been budgeted as twenty-five meetings. Which is possibly just to take into account that there might be a special meeting at some point.
Well, we can put the extra seventy-five in the budget. He may not spend it. In case...
Well, yeah, if you have special meetings or anything else, you know...
And currently, his rate puts us, puts him above four of us on the select board. Because he's made it sixty. So that comes to fourteen forty.
So he's a bonus annually, so it's already...
Yeah, to make more.
But he's also doing a travel plan, too. He's coming from...
I think it was part of your thinking. That was...
I wanted to have, I wanted to have a travel stipend, and then we discuss.
That's better just to put it on one...
Add fifteen dollars and share away. Alright, so we are in discussion. Any other points of discussion? Alright, uh, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of changing the rate for the recording clerk to seventy-five dollars a meeting, signify by saying aye?
Starting two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Okay. Now...
So we read the article number on the list.
Uh, write articles first. So we did that. We did A.
Yep, we did that.
We did B. We, we don't have to do the...
Howies and rules.
Are we going to do Howies and rules and general budget in two separate islands or trans pairs?
It's one more, one more name, two line items. I would.
Yeah, I would, sure.
Yeah, that way they can... So the amount for town office operations...
So can I just bring something up, though? Is there anything left in the budget aside from the additional five hundred that we just added? That isn't reflected in the current number?
Oh, wow.
That we want to discuss? I'll say, I want to discuss recycling.
I want to bring up recycling, too, because we got Wyndham Solid Waste Management District paperwork and the man, did you get it also, or just me?
I think they've sent it to their chair.
Okay. Alright, so let's, let's hold off and talk a little bit about the recycling budget.
You guys talk about the recycling. I'm gonna go turn on my computer and put in some new numbers just to make sure.
The number for work line for recycling, based upon our two thousand and ten census, the approved assessment for fiscal year nineteen, two thousand nineteen, will be four thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and nineteen cents. Four thousand, six, twelve, nineteen.
So that's the lesson we thought, right?
It is...
Yeah, I mean, we had...
We guess there were five.
We, I, we strongly suspected it would be that, but we put forty-seven fifty because it hadn't actually been voted on yet when we talked about it last. I would suggest we actually change it to forty-six thirteen.
Forty-six thirteen. That makes sense.
I mean, it's not much.
It's gone down the last three years because of the closing of the system, so... Forty-six. The changes that we saw, percentage increases have varied because there are two towns who have withdrawn from the system. When was that?
It's, um... H five? W S W and D land.
Yeah, forty-seven.
Where we at, forty-seven fifty? Right above forty-seven.
Forty-seven fifteen?
Forty-six thirteen.
Wyndham Solid Waste, forty-six thirteen.
Thanks, guys.
I'll smile.
We're pretty close.
Well, I'm watching you. So, I mean, I'll say this again. Can we discuss recycling?
Yes, yes, definitely, it's part of the budget.
Okay, so, and I'll recap it for Chris when he comes back out. I am concerned that we're going to go over budget on recycling.
Yeah, me too. According to the numbers you projected.
Well, according to the projections, what do we have, ten thousand, five hundred with the...
But that was from June, wasn't it?
No, it's, yeah, here it is. Here it is fair.
Samara put in a whole, we had some of that.
Right. I mean, the, the problem is, and I mean, I think we've, we've talked about this before, that the commodities prices for recycling, for single-stream recycling, are not going in a good direction for us. The reality is, because of our volume, if it, if the tipping fees go up by twenty dollars a ton or ten dollars a ton, it doesn't make a huge difference over the course of time. I mean, the, the bulk of our cost is in the hauling cost, not in the processing of the materials. And it's, it's all very speculative, but when I looked, I went back through all of the numbers, and it looks to me like certainly in December as compared to September and August, the cost of processing the materials has gone up twenty or thirty percent maybe. Targeted, because we don't have the detail of knowing exactly how much material there was. But, you know, in, in August, or whatever, in August, our most expensive processing was sixty-two bucks for haul. And in December, our cheapest one, or our most expensive was seventy-eight. I mean, the average appears to be going up. I don't know by how much.
I just found the bill today, and I think it was even a little higher. And they've gone to...
Yeah.
Is it because of additional trash that has to be pulled out of the recycling?
No, it's the commodities market itself.
I think it's just that, you know, when we started this whole thing, the markets were such that they were actually, Triple T and wherever Salvage were able to actually make money off of selling this stuff. Now things have flipped such that they either make less money, or it actually costs them money. So then, therefore, it costs us more money.
I think also maybe added in is fuel. Fuel prices have come up a little bit from, oh, a smidge a year ago.
Yeah, I mean, that...
Yeah, they have.
Yeah, I mean, that...
All the equipment they use to move this.
So, I guess my concern is that even based on the numbers we've got right now that Samara went through, we project out to be, you know, a couple hundred bucks under the eleven thousand that we budgeted.
Right.
In the future, I, I guess partly it's just a debate of, you know, what if we end up coming in eight hundred dollars over the budget? Or we, do we think we have enough play elsewhere that we can deal with that? Or should we start to consider budgeting more money for this?
Well, we could do that next year, Dave, for like five, eight hundred bucks. I mean, we're not talking eight thousand. We're not talking five thousand.
I don't, yeah, I mean, it's the...
It's not the end of the world, I think.
Yeah, the volume is not that it's gonna be massively different, but it, you know, it could be... I mean, if all things were being equal, looking at this right now, I would be inclined to probably budget twelve thousand dollars out here, rather than eleven thousand dollars.
You got a point, because I also...
But I don't know that we necessarily want to do that in the two thousand eighteen budget.
Well, there's thought that the price of fuel's gonna go up even further. It's a rumor. I heard someplace. God only knows if it's right or not. But if that's the case, we're gonna get hit. So, a lot of my thousands...
Well, the price of fuel, I mean, you know, if they've broken over sixty-dollar a barrel price, but I think the market is also gonna be, uh, we're gonna see more oil coming from the United States into the market, which I think will decrease the, the cost of oil. But again, it's such a volatile market. You want, it's like, you know, your crystal ball's a little hazy.
You think? So, do we, do we worry about a thousand bucks here, a thousand bucks? I don't think we do. We, unless you want to tap into that surplus, I don't think it was...
We have the nine fifty-six that we put for capital improvement.
Yeah, that would not... So we would return it to the taxpayers and then taxing them for it. That's what power would have to be. Because if we put a reserve this month...
Yeah.
It's a surplus.
Yes, right.
Yeah, it's a surplus.
And I don't want to get bogged down into what we, right, with what we do today. This is more just, if, if the trend over the last couple months has been that this has been going up, at some point, it will stabilize. It's, it's unlikely that it will just continue to go up. But the baseline, six months from now, might be what it is right now. And what we, what we haven't done is projected a year's worth of the prices that we've been getting right now.
Yes, I can see that.
And if we were to do that, I think the number would be closer to twelve thousand than the ten seven thirty-five.
So would it be...
So it, I'm just saying, I think it might be prudent for us to consider budgeting...
Twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand rather than eleven thousand. It's all super guesswork.
Yeah, but you have, I'm starting to believe that you're probably right. Well, I saw your numbers that you sent through. And everything I saw was from June.
Alright.
Uh, no, we have, no...
You sent out a list of...
She just sent out, yeah, this...
To the day.
I don't know if I saw it.
Yeah, it was in an email.
On the fifteenth.
I'll go look again.
If we do this...
Oh, wait, I thought it was my last one there.
Yeah, that's an email.
We're keeping eleven in our budget. Would we have to warn the other towns?
No.
No, we would just decide to budget twelve instead of eleven. I mean, we left the eleven that we budgeted last year because at that point, we had no real information.
You asked for this so that we would have some more concrete numbers. You're right, you're right.
That's the latest that I just got today.
What's that?
It's like eighty dollars a ton.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's, like you say, it's going up.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, at some point, whatever, it continues to go up, it'll be unsustainable for us, but...
I think we get to a point, if, you know, if we're in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year with the recycling, and we're noticing at this time next year, we, you know, we, we might bring it to the, to the town at that point, saying, you want to continue? You want to change it? This, we've done this for two years, it's costing this amount, and can have an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't mind increasing it to eleven or twelve now.
Do you want to bring up another business this year, or you just want to leave? Save dog's life.
Well, I think Dave has a real, you know, a good handle on what's going on.
I don't think we should, yeah, I mean, I don't, I... For me personally, I don't think whether we budget eleven or twelve is something that necessitates asking people about.
No.
I think it's more just a question for us. I mean, we could, we looked at this, we've looked at, you know, Samara's done the numbers, and over twelve months, this projects to be under eleven, so we might be okay. But...
I'd say we go with it.
Depends on how you look at the numbers.
You know what?
What?
She's talking.
She's not talking.
Okay.
And in part, I guess it's whether we think we've held everything else enough in line, and I mean, obviously, there are things we've added, costs for, we've added stipends and things. Do we, do we think we have a thousand dollars that we want to put towards this? Or should we try to keep this as mean as we can keep it?
What do you think?
And I don't know what the right answer is. I think either...
I'm gonna go with the nice survey, so.
Either makes sense.
Well, I think if you think, if we're pretty sure it's gonna go up, I think it should be budgeted.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I would prefer it be twelve than eleven.
Chris?
I agree with Gwen.
We got three dollars here.
I'm under the feeling it's not gonna break the budget to add another thousand bucks.
Okay. So, we don't even make a motion, but we can tell our treasurer in there that we would like to change the line item from recycling from eleven thousand to twelve thousand, and then, we'll be modifying a couple of numbers, but I'm gonna go in there.
Generally speaking, if the total of the budget comes up as far as, wait a minute, you increased it ten thousand dollars over last year. Well, we didn't really because of the eleven thousand right there. So we basically have level funded. So this, I'm looking at the explanation to the community on March sixth, and I think, I think we're doing the prudent thing.
Okay, I'm gonna, we'll be changing a couple of numbers.
And I think the numbers that we have changed, I think, and will be prepared to be, are all... We didn't for a reason.
Yeah.
Explain those reasons.
Yeah, it wasn't just a...
It wasn't just, you know, knee-jerk.
Hey, somebody could come up and say, other business, we want to get rid of the dumpsters. We don't know this. It could happen.
Yes.
It could. I, I don't know where that's coming from.
We're really in the plus land.
Well, no, the problem is that, you know, I'm seeing people that are, you know, utilizing out dumpsters, and, and it's hard to police it. I mean, I, I tried, but after a while, I get, you know...
I would ever be able to get this done correctly.
You're trying to do it to help the town. I think I can do that twenty-four times.
Yeah, so that, right, so that's an extremely good point.
No, no, I'm ready to come back out.
We'll clarify when we come back out.
I gave it a post, and she's gonna...
So when Gwen comes back, I will steal Chris's really good idea and use it for my own. No, Chris just pointed out that...
He's paying the eleven thousand dollars.
We're, we're lowering the, or the Wyndham Solid Waste fees are going down by over fifteen hundred dollars, and we're increasing the recycling by a thousand dollars. So we're still for that service, if we want to kind of bundle it all into a service. We're, that's still going down.
Five hundred dollars, approximately.
Yeah, right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and that's, that's an extremely good point. Exactly, right. But if you look at just that sort of package of service, it's going down.
We've done the job. We've had a good job. We did a lot of work since November.
Right, we're, we're in good shape. Paying attention and focusing.
Oh, we're in good shape. It reminds, it's kind of reminding me of when we were doing the managing committee. When we went through the same type of process, where we're analyzing this and analyzing the numbers.
Yeah.
So when it came to the presentation of the hundred people that were there...
Even bringing us up to twelve, we're still for that.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of, we're still, we're still fine.
Our backs are, yeah, we just did all the diligence, and we're able to answer all these questions. So if Chris comes up...
So we have answers.
We're level funding.
Can I, can we table further, moving into our treasurer is back in here? Can we take a look at our agenda and go through maybe pay orders?
Okay, let's do it.
So if we go fine, I'm gonna...
Yeah, let's do it.
I believe I already...
We will never edit that out.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna pass around the payroll, which was already signed by myself. You all observed that, and I'll look for this and pass this around.
Donna, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
With relation to Southern Lake Nature.
Yes.
They were supposed to do that system, eh?
I emailed the, the engineer this morning and said, because I was looking at my calendar, I said, I haven't heard. So I haven't, I emailed her this morning, Jessica.
Because we still don't even know what that's gonna come out to as far as cost, do we?
Correct, that's what we're trying to, that's what we're...
We gotta know, so, well, I'll tell you why, yeah, we're doing the agenda.
Well, one good thing is that our CLA has gone up...
It is?
Yeah, from ninety-four to ninety-five, you know, a little, a point, it's a spike. But it's, it's also good because it will also decrease our education taxes by a little bit. So that's, you know, that's a good point.
What was it last year?
Ninety-four point six. This year, we're ninety-five point eight or something.
I've heard we're in better shape than other towns.
Yeah. Well, a hundred percent is perfect, and it's hard to be perfect. But the bottom line is that when you assess that over the valuation, But the bottom line is that when you assess that over the valuation, your, your education taxes go down because they think you're assessed too high. When you're less, they say, oh, you're not, you're not.
Not assessed.
You're under assessing the properties, so we have to increase the property, the education tax. It's, it's all numbers and it, it doesn't make sense until you work with them every day and you say, oh, okay, now I get it. Yeah.
Now it's time to.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
Can you hang on one second? Sorry, I guess you can.
That's fine. No, 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 it's fine, I know you're doing a little bit here. Do I want new copies? Or at least something, yeah, okay. Otherwise, yeah, I typed in the wind and waste number wrong and it, like, changed my number in unexpected. So.
I wonder why.
It's like 50%. Sorry, man, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll warrant 2018-27 dated January 10, 2018 in the amount of $1,439.48. Do I have a second? Seconded by Chris, any discussion?
What was the date on that?
January 10, please, I signed it.
Okay.
All those in favor of accepting payroll warrant 2018-27 from January 10 in the amount of $1,439.48, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Payroll warrant passed, accepted. I'd like to make a motion that we.
Please accept it.
I mean, that we accept this state accounts payable warrant 2018-28 dated January 17, 2018 in the amount of $5,901.36. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting accounts payable 2018-28 for $5,901.36, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, okay, so that's done. I can talk about email and regular mail. I don't see any regular mail here.
Please.
Email, I don't really have any email. Comments and concerns? I think Mark already addressed, since I had a resident call me up, asked about why we were winging back the snow on Friday, January 12. And I explained to him that the weather conditions were changing and that there was some mitigation of hazards that we were trying to deal with before it became a problem, so.
Yeah, I, I have.
That's what you said, that's what I thought, so.
Other towns that were doing the same, they were going along making places for.
For the water to run. Throw it all frozen to ice.
Because the snowbanks where they meet the road, they freeze to it. So when we get rain, they can't get into the ditch and it ekes the gravel up.
So that's what I explained in the.
So, you know, in my travels, where the snow was accumulated, I was pushing it back to make more room in those areas. A lot of times I just had to wing down on my way to a site where I was making improvements. So it wasn't really out there just to wing snowbanks, it was.
Looking at specific areas for runoff, which made sense when I saw you, I figured that's what you were.
You were just winging it.
Yeah.
You were winging it. Any other concerns or comments that came up from anybody ever? Okay, so that's done. We can set the agenda for the regular meeting up for Wednesday, February 7, which begins at 7:30. I put on here, we can skip this, that would be the RFP for carpentry work at the Sunny Lane daycare.
We could do that the 21st, but we really need to get right on that. But that's what I was pointing towards when I was asking about the budget Sunny Lane daycare. Just about the, about the work just going to be done because I figured out what kind of money would that budget?
Yeah, right. I don't know if we're going to have, yeah, I mean, I think we're going to have to contemplate whether we can even afford to do that.
Oh, I hate the idea of not being able to that.
I know, but I mean, if we have.
I'm talking about the carpentry work and we've got the carpentry work and we.
Well, some of the things, we have to do the insurance wire. We have to do the insurance mitigation hazard repairs first.
Right.
That's minimal.
Well, it's not done yet, it's been.
There, I'm talking about big dollars.
Well, when I'm saying the, the water stuff that we need to do there, the cost of that is.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we don't know.
We don't know.
Will we be, do we even have any money outside of that to be.
Tomorrow, estimate how much we got in the budget for Sunny Lane daycare?
I'll just go look it up.
Distractions.
Thanks, that'd be great.
Did I want our quality test, they?
Yes, they're staying on. We had another one this month.
Tomorrow.
There hasn't been any hits on it. There's another one tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yep.
Yeah, I remember.
Don.
Yes, sir.
On the 21st, I want to try and have you some answers about.
Let's start at the center of the room. I'll look for you.
Thank you. So you can put that on the 10 for the 21st, I need to put it on the 7th.
No.
But I got to move on that.
Hit one off the table.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Anything else for the agenda for the. You want to put a date on it, I can print the date on it. That would be good.
So what do we actually have for the agenda on the 7th?
Um, not much, nothing really.
We have the boat. I think we could all, on the, well, we have the road.
Oh, the road, yeah, we have some road paper.
In the large, yeah.
Okay, that's that, but as far as the year, it's finalized somewhat. It seems to be pretty much.
We should be timed accordingly.
Samara's going to look at it, but we should be pushing somewhere towards 10 grand on that, on that budget at this point.
I'm sorry? Oh, right, you want to see what's in the Sunny Lane, what's in their fund?
That would be one of the.
What is left as of, as of now? Yes.
That'd be great. So then we can, we just, we stole all the engineering things and of course.
Well, it's less than 7,000 or something to that.
So, okay, we might discuss that on the 7th, but we don't have to go crazy, just 7th, you don't have to go crazy.
Well, like I said, I wrote to the, Jessica, the vet engineering today about that. I also, I apologized, Mark, I also sent a carbon copy to Archie, but I never, I wrote the letter for my Fitzpatrick's, the extra gravel in my paper work list, but I never sent it out electronically. It got sent out today, though.
That's fine.
So I'm going to ask him to call you and, and set that up.
Sure.
I also gave him a copy of the material delivery ticket for the rest of it because I said it appears a half of it was delivered to the school and the other half, you'll point out a place to put the gravel at the yard. So that's, that's how I worded it.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, so the agenda's pretty skeletal agenda with some inputs in there for the business. Nice, we're good.
We have nothing in there, okay.
We're just going to wait on the number of the money now.
We're done except for this, sorry.
Yep.
I'm late, I'm kidding. What did you say, 3:00?
This is a lot of people. No, we got, we got 3:00, next day.
Next day, I think I'll get a cuckoo bar.
We just need to have 40 dollars.
You know what I realized? We just finished the bankrupts for December, so I will, I will email you December financials.
Okay.
I have to come in tomorrow briefly to now send the revised reports to the auditors. And I'll look at them once in the morning to make sure I wasn't sleepwalking. Thank you.
You have the fee for Sunny Lane?
I, I, yeah, I'm.
Oh, okay.
I'm making concrete for everybody, but this is as of today's date. So obviously, January isn't done, but according to my report, they have $5,300 in their surplus. They have a, their current year, they're still ahead by, by $1,100. And then I printed out their revenue and expenses. So you can see what the expenses charged to them are. Thank you.
They have $5,300 in the year.
They have $5,300 in their total, in their bunch.
And then we get, what, 1,300 a month from Samara?
1,200.
1,275, is it?
12 something.
So.
Like 12, 1287 or 12, you know, one of those kind of not quite run others. Who do you take this one?
Thank you.
I made some pretty less of the guys.
So we got the money.
I'm not going to state one of them.
Thank you.
Sunday as results, Oklahoma, so to speak. Here, you want a, you want a copy too?
What is it, that's the?
It's just Sunny Lane.
Oh, no, I'm good. Someone was increasing.
Okay, Sunny Lane.
Let's do one of, there's some of these things that get killed, so. I know, and we've been confronted, I mean, even with all that, we kept it as tight as we did. I don't do that.
I think the state boysmen is prudent as they can be, I mean.
He's trying.
What are you going to do?
And you know, we're fortunate because this town has no medical payments, nobody gets any sick time, nobody gets anything, so.
What was telling them?
You get to Athens or Newfane or anything else where they pay their medical and so forth. And 99% of the towns that I know, of the 251 towns, they pay medical for them and their spouses.
Really?
Yes. So we're very fortunate. But you know, a small town like anything else, even though you're small, as small as we are, you know, we still have a big budget because if you have a lot of people, you can spread that money around, you know, it's, it's just difficult being a small town.
All right, let's go back to.
Can I ask?
Go ahead, questions?
Can I ask you a question before we start going through the article? Last year, at town meeting, there was a problem with the numbers.
Sweet. The number problem was, was a deficit from legal expenses and.
No, not the, the number that was warned, the.
Not last year.
Was warned was incorrect and was that, I just, I'm only saying that so we can just make sure we don't do that again.
So what happened was, we warned the normal operations, but there was a mix-up as to what we ended up doing was amending our operating total to include something that was listed as a special article. Happened to be a death.
Right, right, correct.
And that's how it was best handled under the circumstances.
Okay, that's all right.
All right.
Okay, so then I would propose that we fill in the number, the couple of numbers to Article 7. And then I will read the entire warning in detail.
Okay.
And then we'll vote on it?
Sounds good.
Because that sounds.
Yeah, and you have to warn, you have to say that total number. Because if you don't, there will be someone at the, at the town meeting who will say, but that's not the total number.
Right, we have to show the breakdown amount, right, so I'm just writing it down. So if I'm right, that the, the number we're talking about is the 301-517.
Yeah.
Which is 14305. And the 512.
517. I'm going to check the, just check my details, I checked everything, it's pointing to the right. Top would be 143005. Bottom one?
Appropriations.
Should be. Oh, it's got such a weird page. The appropriations stayed the same, 6306. In total, but you have to warn $100.
Article 9, 6206.
Article 9, 6206.
Yeah, 626 plus.
You can write the. Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
And then we just discuss the dates we're going to collect taxes.
Yeah, okay, it's right to me.
Inform anything else.
Basically, we're 10 months on this budget.
Yeah, it's, come on, it's a beast.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
And that's what I think that's over.
The auditors have specifically asked me to communicate that we try to finish it at the beginning of January next year. So.
How do we do that if we don't get all the numbers?
Well, you base, you have to base it on estimates. We'll see.
How can we do that? It's going to be based on estimates, you can get the order, you can base that on that.
So.
Most of what they need, they need the, yeah, they need, it's fine. They need, they need.
Okay. We'll let you control it tomorrow.
They need this, they need all the financials because that's what they audit.
Yep, okay.
And they're, you know, they're under the gun to get it done. But I think I've sent them, I sent them the almost complete one so they could. And I said, if anything changes after tonight, I'll send it again. Okay. All right.
So do we think I have to make a motion that?
The articles read as.
That the articles read as, then I have to read the whole thing? And then somebody has to second it?
We got to read through the article?
Yeah, okay.
Just go for it.
As the recording.
We'll let you know if you don't like it. We got everything, we got clues in there.
Then you have, yeah, you have to vote the number.
We have to vote the number before we vote on the articles?
It's kind of one in the same.
Oh, yeah.
What is, while he's working, what is the separation, where would I?
Well, that's off.
What do you want this number?
1312.
If you want to.
It's just curiosity within the 10.
This number? Okay, that's, okay, and that's the.
I figured it out for you.
Yes, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Every freaking year. That's just, you know, this is basically, you know, this is not for cement, but I'm going to be at $400. My taxes are going to be $8,000. Yeah, it's, they're driving people out of the area. Well, you go to Brownsville and that same, that same, you know, which you have services. I figure it would be 12 and 12 and 12 and a half thousand dollars. Brownsville's totally, you know.
Out of control.
They're at 289, I think. 287, we're at 2, now we're going to 233. Last year we were at 231.
We're both, we're only in this number?
Last year we were at 11.
This is just how much we have to raise in taxes. Not including this. Not including all these.
Last year we were 223, now we're 233, 235.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Again, education, you should put 76 and 11. And what does Dr. Scott say? He goes, he goes.
158.
The local schools got to cut their costs. And I've been to these meetings and you're cutting programs, you're cutting courses, you're cutting teachers at this point. It's kind of like saying to the, like to say to the husband and wife that's got three kids, three kids moved out, cut your costs more. If you can't.
Let's kill some special education.
You don't want 500, I won't make it later.
And you have a lot of, 223. They have children, they have a lot, 220. That's just a fact, you know, just the way it is. But okay, that's one thing. So then when, when the teachers, well, okay, when teachers, when they play 60, 70, 100, 200. Yes, how can they make it that? How about Arlington, you're at 75,000? I'm talking about. I bet you're making 60,000 dollars. Teachers, 60,000? Yeah.
If they've been there 15 years.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
It's not a starting.
I've never seen a number stick out like that on their budget. I'll look, I'll look in the. Well, where your venture profits, the two guys that run the show again.
Well, no, you've asked many times that they put the, the salaries in the.
Their salaries are right through the roof.
Who's that?
The late time, Bob Tivoe. They're getting 150, 75 grand a year for one.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Not only that, but how many buildings do we have to take care of? Look at our transportation homes for the children, you know, it's all these things.
Excited about, about Act 46 because they're going to be, they think they're going to be a little.
All right, my nervous attention. It's my gavel. It's my gavel.
You need a gavel.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that the warning for the 2018 Brookline Town Meeting read as follows. The legal voters of the town of Brookline are hereby warned to meet in the multi-purpose room at the Brookline School Building in the said town of Brookline on Tuesday. on Tuesday, the 6th day of March, at 9 o'clock in the forenoon to transact the following business. Article 1, to elect a moderator. Article 2, to elect a town clerk. Article 3, to elect a town treasurer. Article 4, to elect a collector of delinquent taxes. Article 5, to elect all other officers required by law. Article 6, shall the town accept the auditor's report? Article 7, shall the town vote to approve the general and highway fund expenditures net of non-tax budgeted revenues for the town as follows.